I serve as Vice Chair for the zoning board, and I've been asked to chair today's meeting in the absence of our Chairman Tony Raschow. At this point, I'd like to call on one of our members to stand, Gary if you would, and lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Okay, I'd like to call a roll call, please, if you would, Mike.
Board Member Gambrell.
President.
Board Member Waterhouse.
President.
Board Member Benson.
President.
Vice Chairman Hirschenson.
President.
Board Member Galloway.
President.
And Chairman Raschow is excused absent, and Russ Winn is also asked to be excused today. We have a quorum. Vice Chair.
All right, before we begin, a lot of people are here this morning, and we want to make sure that everything is done according to the rules that cover such meetings as these. And a public hearing, anybody who is here that plans to testify during any of these cases this morning, please stand and be sworn in by our Attorney Derek Rooney.
Do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
So following each presentation, there will be, are the presentations by the city staff, the applicant, and then there'll be an opportunity for public comment on each of the cases as they are presented. I would like to ask those who are making presentations, and ask the people, please hold off your comments until the presenter has completed their presentation. I think that would make the meeting flow a little bit smoother, if you could all please cooperate with that request. At this time, the first case is the Lahan Residential Plan Development, and I believe the case number PD 231090A2-BOS. I think the presenter from the staff would be Mike Fegan. Mike, please.
Good morning, everybody. Mike Fegan with Community Development for the record. I'm just going to give a brief introduction, and then, per usual, we're going to let the applicant go first, since this is their request, it's their burden before you. So this is a request to rezone approximately two acres, give or take, that had a residential plan development already bestowed upon it back in 2006. The master concept plan associated with that development has expired, so they are here essentially to, instead of reinstate the original plan, come up with a new plan, but ask for the same dwelling unit count, six single-family homes spread out over these two acres. It's below the maximum density. The staff report and the conditions kind of speak for itself. This really wasn't a very difficult one to go through overall, but the analysis is clear, the staff position is clear. The applicant agrees with the conditions that have been placed on this particular rezoning request. Staff is recommending approval, but I'll go ahead and turn it over to the applicant for a brief presentation. If you need more follow-up after that, staff also has a brief presentation. We're also here to answer any questions you might have. So let me go ahead and pull up the applicant's slides and turn it over to them.
Okay, the applicant, would the presenter be Peter Moshtrick?
It's going to be Aaron Spence with Moshtrick Engineering.
On behalf, thank you. All right. Hello, I'm Aaron Spence, on behalf of Moshtrick Engineering, on behalf of the applicant, prime bid construction, here to present the Lahan Residential Plan Development rezoning and reestablishing of the master concept plan. As you can see here, our parcel is laid out here, highlighted, so I'll start the presentation. I think I can just use this space more. Thank you, though. As you can see, the site address, 9650 Lahan Family Road, currently is vacant, a little wooded, but we have intentions, obviously, to clear and plan moving forward for that. Our request, residential plan development rezoning, but technically really just the reestablishing of the master concept plan. Here's the surrounding zoning and land uses, nothing that is out of the ordinary, mainly ag to, with nothing that would inhibit the development for single-family developments. This is our proposed master concept plan. We intend to divide it up into seven lots of varying sizes, most of them being 0.2 acres for lots one through four. Lot five is a little bit smaller, and then lot six with the intention of stormwater maintenance, and then a larger lot for lot seven down at the end of the cul-de-sac. This is our schedule of uses, although, like I said, we do intend to stick to the single-family These are the proposed property development regulations that we intend to establish with this RPD. The only deviation from the standard would be the side setbacks that we are requesting instead of the standard 15 feet to have at seven and a half, which was also established in the previous master concept plan. And this is just an outline and our justification, which I just gave. Based on the staff analysis, we were recommended approval for this deviation on the basis that it was already previously established in the previous master concept plan and that it doesn't conflict with any current Land Development Code criteria. Conclusion, or at least the staff's conclusion, they recommended approval for this. It doesn't really impede on anything, it's within zoning regulations and use for this site based on the Land Development Code. And inclusion, we feel that we are in compliance with all staff and Land Development Code regulations for this site, so I'd like to open up the floor for any questions or anything.
Members of the board, have any questions of the applicant?
The setback, the current requirement is requirement for buildings and structures to be set back from the development perimeter at least 15 feet, and you're asking for a deviation to cut that to seven and a half feet from the development perimeter. So you're talking about the rear yard?
No, the side, the side in between each parcel, in between the, in between each property and each lot.
So perimeter is a mistake. You're talking about side yard.
Yeah, that's, did I say perimeter? I apologize if I did.
This says perimeter.
Oh, I see, in the staff report. Thank you.
Let me jump in here for a second. Mike Fegan with Community Development to go ahead and redirect this a little bit. So there are no issues with the interior side yard setbacks. We're talking about the outward perimeter of the development as a whole. So when you read the staff analysis, it talks about that that request really only affects two lots on the master concept plan, lot one and lot seven, because those are the perimeter lots of the project. So there is an explanation for why staff felt it was okay to allow that deviation to occur. If you want to look at lot seven as an example, the purpose of the perimeter setback is to help establish distance between existing development and proposed development. The existing development that abuts lot seven, the closest structure, is almost 25 feet away, which in a regular residential zoning district would be allowed to be a lot closer. So there's no issue with the perimeter setback overall of just allowing that single-family home on lot seven to develop to what would be just a standard seven and a half-foot single-family residential setback. On lot one, you also don't have the issue because it abuts a roadway, but there was a condition placed on the development of lot one that in order to avoid a conflict with that particular intersection, that whenever the house is developed and the driveway is developed, the driveway needs to be as far away from that intersection as possible to avoid the conflict. Since the applicant agreed to those conditions, staff didn't see an issue with approving that deviation.
Thank you.
So what is the, what distance or what depth from the perimeter is the rear yard for most of these lots?
It's over 20 feet.
Over 20 feet?
Yeah. 20 feet plus, yep.
Within that, you're going to put, is there's going to be a swale?
So they have their drainage, their final drainage design hasn't been figured out just yet, but the point is that all of the water from all of the lots is going to be collected and directed towards the water management lot that they're going to be creating. From there, it's going to flow further to the west where there's an existing drainage easement already that they're going to reestablish, and that's ultimately going to flow to the Imperial River. It somewhat mirrors the concept that you heard at your last meeting, which was the project directly abutting this to the south, that 40-unit, single-family, two-family project that was discussed on the corner of Pennsylvania and Wisconsin. They have a very similar drainage pattern where it's going to flow to the west and then ultimately to the Imperial River. They're following the same pattern.
See, the only thing that goes in the rear yard of these houses is a drainage ditch.
Well, they, I mean, they have development parameters, I mean, you know, other than drainage, they're allowed to have pools and sheds, just like any other residential area, with the setbacks contained within the staff report and the development regulations. But yes, the rear of the lots, a portion of it is going to be dedicated towards drainage so that everything flows appropriately to the lake that they're going to create.
It's going to be a swale.
Yes.
But the pool can't go in that 20 feet.
The pool can go in the, well, it's, the pool can go in that 20 feet because the drainage easement is not, likely not going to be 20 feet wide. The pool can't go in the drainage easement, but again, those final numbers haven't been figured yet. This is just, this is the concept and the stormwater narrative, just letting you know how it's planning on working.
Anything else, Bruce, or ending?
On page seven, you say, if the setbacks for the water retention area, the nearest structure are less than 25 feet, the deviation must be applied for in accordance with LDC 381. When does all that happen?
So that would happen at the development order stage. That occurs whenever you want to go ahead and dig a lake or dig a stormwater retention pond. The engineering portion of our Land Development Code does have distance separations between the edge of that lake and where the nearest residential structure is. Since it's man-made, since there's a little bit more control over it, you can control the depth, the slopes, all that stuff, it's an administrative deviation that they might have to apply for. Reason being, like you see on the master concept plan, they are going to have houses on both sides of that lake. So it's one of those things where if the design of those houses is such that it's going to be at least 25 feet away from the lake bank, they're going to be okay. If it looks like it's going to be a little bit closer, they may have to apply for a deviation, they may have to put fencing around the lake, depending on the slope and for safety reasons. All those things occur during the engineering stage. It was one of those things that staff wanted them to be aware of that now, in case they wanted to go ahead and amend their building footprints now or adjust their setbacks now. So it was more of an FYI to the applicant at this stage. But it's not something that would come before the board for approval. It happens administratively during the engineering stage.
Is there anybody else on the board, have any questions? Okay. Next will be what, Mike, do you want to make your presentation now, or?
Sure.
Thank you.
Thank you, Aaron.
Thank you.
I know you have a busy hearing schedule today, so I'm not trying to take up too much of your time with this one. We'll just, I think we already hammered out some of the more pressing issues that have to do with the drainage and the deviation, because that's where the bulk of my presentation was focused anyway, but we already handled that aspect of it. So just a quick shout-out to the review team, per usual. We put these applications through their paces with all sorts of disciplines, taking a look at it, planning, bike pads, surveying, engineering, environmental, traffic, all the disciplines took a crack at this one. We already know where we're located. This was the project that we were looking at. The last time we all met was this piece here, so the one we're looking at today is directly abutting that piece to the north. And again, the request is for six single-family homes on seven lots, and again, that's seven lot being for stormwater and drainage. And as I had discussed in the original intro, a similar project was approved back in 2006 that allowed six single-family homes. The master concept plan expired in 2011. Unless otherwise stated, these concept plans that come before you are valid for five years, unless a substantial portion of the project is developed or completed, otherwise they expire. So as you can see, that lot is still vacant, this plan was never developed, so they are back in to go ahead and, I'll say reinstate, but it's slightly different from what was approved in 2006. It's a different lot layout, different location of the lake, but the same concept is there, the same number of homes, six single-family homes over two acres. The schedule of uses, pretty standard and pretty tame for this type of development, single-family again being the prevailing dwelling unit type, the excavation, which is going to allow the water retention to occur, home occupations, a model home to be able to sell out the rest of the units and have a little office in there, standard recreational facilities and residential accessory uses for, you know, your pools, your sheds, your decks, your patios, things of that nature. Property development regulations are pretty close to what you would see in a conventional residential, single-family district in terms of lot size and setbacks. So just as an aside, if this wasn't an RPD, getting back to that deviation, the standard residential setback, side yard residential setback in the city is seven and a half feet. So that's what they're asking for. So there really isn't much of a conflict there if you remove the perimeter issue. That perimeter setback requirement really is designed for larger RPDs to help offset some of the visual impacts. So that 15-foot perimeter is where you would put a barrier wall, landscaping, things like that, that you see with a lot of these larger-scale developments. This isn't what that is intending to be. This is intending to just assimilate within the existing surrounding, single-family and duplex area. And again, a copy of the master concept plan. One thing that the applicant did not mention, but it was in the application and it was in the application backup available for you, is that they are going to be building out Lahan Family Road. So right now, that road is not constructed, it's a dirt road, it exists, it's accessible, there are homes north of that road that use it, but this applicant is going to be constructing it to city standards and also providing the required sidewalk infrastructure along that roadway to connect to Wisconsin Street. So that's the key piece that I don't, I want to make sure it does not go unnoticed with this proposal. And they do have a cross-section that shows the proposed roadway on the master concept plan for you, and there is a condition that's tied to it in the staff conditions about building out that roadway to city standards and in compliance with the cross-sections provided on the plan for you. So again, the deviation, I think we already discussed what this is for. Again, it's for these larger plan developments where there is going to be more of an exterior visual impact to help offset some of that impact, to help create some buffer and some distance between that type of proposed development and what may be existing around it, to provide for your barrier wall, your landscaping, privacy, things like that. Since this isn't that, that deviation really isn't something that staff had a concern with, because it's not that style of development that would warrant that type of perimeter setback. So the seven and a half feet seemed appropriate, since that's what traditional, single-family residential homes are allowed to have anyway in the city. But we do have conditions placed on that tied to that deviation that I'll go over in a second for you. And again, it only affects two lots, lots one and lot seven. With the environmental impacts, there was 0.12 acres of potential wetlands. If impacted, they will have to mitigate, because just because it's a small amount doesn't mean you get the right to go ahead and just blitz them or clear them if you need to. You still have to go through the necessary process to mitigate. There was a wetland map that showed where those wetlands were that were provided in your application backup online. The, such a small amount of wetlands, though, it's important to note, does not affect their density calculations. So that was something that we had to look at with your last request, where the amount of acreage that was being impacted by the wetland was going to affect their density calculations. They either had to get the mitigation or that plan that you saw wasn't going to work. We're not at risk of that happening in this case. It's such a small amount, and they are very much under the allowable density anyway, that it's not going to affect their calculations, but they still have to mitigate. For stormwater, we touched on that a little bit briefly when Aaron was up here, so there is going to be an onsite water management lot, it's lot six on the master concept plan, and all lots are going to be graded and designed to move the stormwater off of their lots to that master stormwater lot. There's going to be an outfall control structure from that stormwater management lake that's going to help it flow into an existing drainage easement to the west, and then ultimately to the Imperial River. That is the historic flow design for that area, and that is what they are keeping in touch with and keeping in mind. They will have to provide a more detailed stormwater plan at time of local development order. At this stage, since we're conceptual here with zoning, all they are required to do is provide you a narrative and essentially a rough idea of how they plan on constructing it and having it work. And it was still reviewed by staff for historic flow purposes, understanding the way water flows there traditionally. Staff did not have a concerns with their conceptual plan at this time, but again, they will have to provide a more detailed plan during the local development order stage and the engineer, excuse me, and the engineering stage.
How could the water get to the river? I know it's not detailed yet, but what's a way it might get to the river?
There's going to be pipes.
So controlled access point?
It's going to be controlled, yep. Yep, because the water has to be treated first before it gets discharged. That's going to be the big function of the lake, actually, that it gets treated before it gets discharged to the drainage easement that'll end up taking it to the river.
And might it be the same pipe getting to the river that the property to the south is using?
Got it. It's all going to connect. Historic flow.
Like, like it's planned?
Like it's planned. With traffic, because there was such a small number of units being proposed, the applicant went ahead and requested a waiver from providing the full-on traffic impact analysis. It is within their right to do, and it is something that the city has granted before for very small projects or projects where it's perceived that the traffic impact is going to be de minimis. With six single-family homes to the surrounding roadway network, the city's traffic engineer felt that this was one of those cases where they didn't need to go forward with a full-blown traffic impact analysis and traffic impact study. So there was not a full-on traffic impact analysis that was provided. However, before that decision was made, the city's traffic engineer looked at the background traffic data, looked at the affected roadway networks to make sure that the capacity was there to accommodate six single-family homes, and it's there. And that's the ultimate point of the traffic impact analysis, is to understand what type of impact the development's going to have on the roadway network, and is it going to be significant? Six single-family homes is not going to be significant to it. Per usual, we also review the city's comprehensive plan for consistency with these particular projects. So the future land use category is moderate-density residential. I had a little typo there, sorry about that. I put medium-density, moderate-density residential. There's no such thing. Moderate-density residential, 5.8 units per acre, what they're permitted. They have a little over two acres, so you're talking about 10 or 11 units of density that would be permitted. They're asking for six, so they are below what they could ask for in terms of the maximum. The future land use category allows conventional, single-family homes. That's what they're proposing, so there's no conflict there. With the transportation element of the comprehensive plan, I think we discussed how it does abut a roadway that is not built out, nor is it built to city roadway standards. They are going to build out and construct that roadway. It is going to be built to city standards. It is going to have a sidewalk, so it is checking all those transportation element boxes that's needed. For the housing element, it's a residential project proposed in a residential area. You don't get much more cut and dry than that. And they are in the coastal management area, which does allow development under specific parameters. And for an example, is it an infill development? Is it going in an area that may already be surrounded by existing development? Is it of low density, or are they maxing out the density? Will be designed to flood standards, things like that. It's checking all those boxes in this case. It's an infill development, it's surrounded by existing neighborhoods and existing communities, it's lower density in that it is lower than what they could be asking for under the future land use category, and of course, they will be designing to the required flood standards in the Florida Building Code. So when you check off those boxes, it becomes a little bit more appropriate to say that they are compatible with that particular element of the comprehensive plan. So with all that being the case, staff is recommending approval of the rezoning request. There were several conditions that were laid out for you in the staff report that the applicant has agreed to, including consistency with the master concept plan, the schedule of uses and property development regulations that we spoke about, the requirement to pave and improve Lahan Family Road and add the sidewalks. With regards to the model home, we set up hours of operation and an allowance that if you do have some type of real estate office within one of those model homes, that that office use has to cease once the last unit is sold, and it has to be fully converted to a single-family home as it's designed to be. We do have condition six with regards to the water body setbacks for the lake and how they need, they need to be aware now that they may need to adjust either the shape of the lake, the setbacks of the house, the design of the house, depending on how big that lake is and what the setbacks would be from the lake to those existing houses on the sides. We also have the condition, which is related to deviation number one, and this is for lot one, and this has to do with the And this has to do with the location of the proposed driveway for lot one, being placed as furthest away from possible from that intersection of Lahan Family Road and Wisconsin Street to avoid any conflicts there. Compliance with floodplain requirements, which is a pretty, you know, that's sort of one of our boilerplate conditions that we see in a lot of these staff reports. And then, of course, the understanding that approving this master concept plan, approving this zoning, does not guarantee that they will receive their engineering permits or their building permits. This is the conceptual approval at this stage. So with that and with the fact that the applicant agreed to all those conditions, staff is recommending approval of this particular rezoning. If you have any questions, I'm here and so is the applicant.
Yeah, just a point of clarification.
Sure.
One of the maximum allowable heights is indicated to be 35 feet above the base flood level.
Correct.
What is the base flood elevation of this, of this property?
I believe it's... I believe it's elevation 11 out there and I think the existing ground sits at, I want to say, six or seven maybe. It's kind of spotty. So what they would have to do is for each lot, they would provide spot elevation calculations so that we understand where the existing ground elevation is compared to the allowable flood elevation, and then you tabulate your 35 feet from there. It'd be the exact same allowance as if one of those existing homes in the existing communities that surround it, if they were to tear down and rebuild, it'd be the exact same standard.
But those existing homes are not at that standard now, are they?
Many of them are lower. Many of them were built, uh, longer ago, yes.
Well, these houses will be higher than other homes in the neighborhood.
As required, yes.
And, and that first floor will be primarily designed to allow for floodwater to enter the basement or the first floor?
It's going to depend on their design, so they, they would have the option to bring in fill and just make the lots physically higher if they wanted to do one-story ranch-style homes. When you do that, though, you run the risk of if you're building up on a mound, it changes your drainage calculations. It changes your sheet flow. It changes the rate and speed that water flows off the site. So it becomes a little bit more challenging if you choose to do it that way. Now, these lots are bigger than some of the lots that you've seen previously, so they might have the room to be able to flatten it out a little bit and do it that way. But they don't have their design chosen yet for how they would meet those flood elevation requirements. The way you described it is very much one way they could do it.
Otherwise, if you did fill it, you'd be displacing potential flood storage capacity that would have to be replaced somewhere else in the watershed.
It would, and it would also probably change the calculations in size of the proposed lake.
Yes, okay. And so these, these homes probably won't qualify for flood insurance either. Well, they would have to get flood insurance if they had a mortgage, I guess.
They would have to get flood insurance if they have a mortgage and they'd have to demonstrate that they are meeting the minimum flood requirements, which they would be because the city doesn't allow it any other way for new construction.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
You've said lake. It's normally dry, dry retention. We're not building a lake. It's dry retention, isn't it?
Yes, it is. In this case, it is meant to be dry retention, correct. Now, but there are going to be rain events where it does fill. It's going to be designed to hold water if needed. It's going to be designed to treat it before it discharges to the drainage easement, yes.
What it's supposed to do. The .12 acres of wetland, do we know what has created that wetland? Is it a spring? Is it, I'm thinking it's runoff from Wisconsin Street.
Well, I, I want to be clear that when you, it, it could be, but I want to be clear that when I say wetland, there's, there's a few different metrics that you look at to determine if it is a bona fide wetland. You look at the ground coverage, you look at the soil, you look at the actual vegetation that's on site. In this particular case, the primary indication that it might be a wetland, which is why when you read the environmental report, it's not called out as wetland, it's called it as potential wetland, is because the soil type that's there on certain parts of the property might be indicative of an overall wetland. So it's one of those things where when they go through the development order process, they're going to have to provide another environmental report, a more detailed environmental study to go ahead and clarify those things. But since it wasn't, you know, an outright recognition of, yes, this is a bona fide wetland, here's the UMAM score, which would be tied to the mitigation credits you have to get, it, it wasn't done in that way. Really, it was just, the soil type is what was shown. It threw up a few red flags. They marked it on the map.
We've got different kinds of dirt?
Oh, we have 20 or three different soil types and not, and not all of them are indicative of wetlands. Some of them aren't, but they found two soil types that were.
So y'all know, Aaron, you know that as you prepare your stormwater runoff, you've got significant amounts coming off of Wisconsin.
Yes.
We're going to put that burden on you.
I'm sure we should be able to obtain the proper, now just with our storage that we allotted in lot six until further calculations are provided and posted.
That's all I have.
Okay. Anybody else on the, on the board?
Uh, one more question.
Yes, sir.
The standards proposed by the developer require 40% open space. Where is that and what is it?
I think it's 40% lot coverage is what I think it said.
No, the chart says open space.
Oh, yes, 40% open space minimum. So open space is anything not developed. So it's essentially, it's, it's your green space. It's what's, what's not under a roof or a part of a structure. So each lot is going to be required to have at least 40% of the lot dedicated to open space or green space.
You mean not covered by a building?
Correct.
Or driveway?
Correct. No, no, 40, yes, think of it that way. 40% of the property won't have any impervious coverage, whether that's driveway, walkway, pool deck, house. 40% will be open, minimum.
And this meets that?
This meets that, yes. We also run those calculations, so when they come in for their individual building permits, we run all those calculations before we let the building permit go.
Okay, if the board is complete at this point, I'd like to call anybody from the audience who wish to make a public comment on the Lahan Residential Plan Development. This is your opportunity. Anybody here wishing to make any public comment on this proposal?
This property is, is an odd spot, very much residential area. The whole area is developed residential. And I believe the reason it hasn't been developed is because we have so much government inspecting every inch that I think it's time to let these people develop the property. Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, I think we're ready now for a motion. So is there a member of the board who would like to make a motion at this time on this, on this application? Okay, then I'll make the motion to...
I was trying to find out.
Everybody's rushing to make, get in the record. Then I, as chair, I will make a, a motion to approve the application, Lahan Residential Plan Development, PD 23-1090A2-BOS. Is there a second to the motion?
Second.
Seconded by member Waterhouse. At this point, I'd like to, any discussion? I would like to call on the clerk now to read the roll.
Board member Gambrell.
Aye.
Board member Waterhouse.
Aye.
Board member Benson.
Aye.
Vice chairman Herschenson.
Aye.
Board member Galloway.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Thank you all. That was easy.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Aaron. Okay, the second presentation has to do with the, I'll get in a second. The Dean Street Project, case number PD 23-103517-BOS. And to introduce the project would be our city planner, Mary Zizo.
I think he's fine. Good morning, Mary Zizo, Community Development. I'll just give a brief introduction. This is the project at Dean Street in Matheson. They are requesting 48 two-family villas attached. And I will let the applicant go ahead and present. What I handed to you today was additional public comment that we received since the staff report was published, so that that is in the record and you have that to review. If you'd like to go ahead. And I would say that staff is recommending approval and the applicant does agree with the conditions outlined. Thank you.
Good morning, zoning board members and chairman. I'm Wayne Arnold. I'm a certified planner with Grady Minor and Associates here representing the applicant. Our project team consists of Richard Foreman, who's with Sagmore Development. Neil Montgomery is our land use counsel. Michael Delitt, professional engineer from our firm, is here. Jim Banks, the traffic engineer, who's completed the traffic analysis for the project. And Jeremy Stirk, who's not with us today, did the environmental assessment for the project. So the project is about 4.6 acres. It's located at the northeast corner of Matheson and Dean Street here in Bonita. I think most of you are familiar with the site, but it has one, single-family residence on the property. Otherwise, it's been cleared and filled over time. And this site represents an infill project and I think that goes to some of our evaluation and as well as staff's evaluation of the merits of the project. The property is currently zoned TFC2, which allows for duplex and single-family development on the parcel. We're asking for a planned development under the medium-density residential, future land use category that would allow us to get to essentially 53 units. Our proposal is for 48 two-family villas. And we're calling those two-family villas because they are a type of unit that's going to be under common ownership. They're not going to be individual lots as duplex would be, for instance, or a two-family attached where you would have individual platted lots underneath those. This will be under common ownership for the 48 total units, 24 structures. So the master plan is depicted on the screen here. And just to orient you, we have two access points, one on Dean Street, we have another one on Matheson. We have an internal drive that circulates through the site. We have an internal sidewalk system that serves the dwelling units. And importantly, two things, because, you know, I've been doing this a long time in Bonita and two things come up frequently and that's drainage and traffic. And we heard that from neighbors. But in this particular case, and Mike Delitt's going to come up and describe a little bit more about the water management system, but we have two dry detention areas on the northeast and northwest corners of the property, as well as a large linear detention system that'll parallel Dean Street. Discharge will ultimately be down to the Dean Street right-of-way with a piped bubbler cir, um, pipe system. What we're proposing as well is one deviation. It allows us to deviate. Your standards and your code are, are a little unique because if you go to a planned development zoning designation, there are standards that apply that don't apply to typical TFC2 zoning or any of the other conventional zoning districts. So in this particular case, we're asking for deviation to allow the buildings to be as, reduction to allow 10-foot separation between these buildings. We've allowed for those buildings to be two stories maximum. The 10-foot separation is a standard that we've commonly used for many of the single-family home plan developments in the community. It's not a new deviation for this type of project. We brought this same deviation to you in other projects. This allows us some flexibility to, one, provide the water management system and, two, we're doing something a little bit more unique here because we heard from our neighbors, so we are providing a landscape buffer that's not required by your code along our eastern and northern property boundaries. The tree advisory board also reviewed this. There are four heritage trees on the site. They've asked us to mitigate the impact of those, just because they fall in the middle of the site, to landscape in the detention areas as well as the buffer area. So we, we would be in compliance with that and we provided the additional buffering. Here's kind of a conceptual image of the project. And one of the things we also heard, folks said that there's a parking problem for some of the other duplex-type structures in the neighborhood. So we've provided some on-street parking areas along here to provide for additional parking. There will also be a garage for each of the units with a driveway associated with it, so there will be at least two parking spaces per unit, plus the additional on, I'll call it drive aisle parking because they're not platted roads, but we have parking, there will be parallel parking in the site as well. And then you can see where we've got the landscape buffering around the east and north where it's not required, and then, of course, the standard buffering that's along Dean Street and Matheson. We created a line of sight exhibit that we showed some of the neighbors through our various information meetings that we were required to hold. And it just shows you an orientation with sidewalks to Dean Street and Matheson and the setback from those, those roadways as well. So what you have is an isolated project that we've tucked these back in off the street and we provided those landscape buffers to mitigate for any impact to the neighboring properties. Here's a conceptual building elevation. You can see that the structure front, these represent the garages, so you have a two-family dwelling separated by a, a wall, and each one of these would be two stories. We have a floor plan that's typical. Each of these units would be about 1,100 square feet each, if not greater. And you can see that in these, we've got, first floor elevation has living space, garage, lanai, and then second story to the right here has bedrooms with bathroom upstairs. So that represents, in this concept, either three or two-bedroom units with office, et cetera. But we think that's a very good site plan. We think it's a good fit for the neighborhood. And the advantage for us of not having individual platted lots is that you're going to have common ownership, a common homeowners association that can make sure that the water management system and the rest of the site is maintained as it should be and that you don't have to worry about individual owners taking care of their properties. I'm going to let Mike Delitt come up and just give you a quick overview from this slide on how the water management system's going to be treated for the project.
Can you hang on just a second? You said it was a common ownership and now, I'm confused as to whether these are rental properties, they're owned by the people that live in there. What, what was the common ownership?
The common ownership is that the project is required to be either commonly owned or under condominium ownership. It can't be individual sold lots. So none of the units will have individual lots associated with them. It's one common ownership for the overall property.
For the land, but the building that I'm living in is, I've bought it.
If you bought it as a condominium unit, yes, you would own the condominium unit itself.
What are my other options?
The other option would be that it could be a rental, perhaps, but your code doesn't distinguish between rental and ownership.
Thank you. Got it.
So that's that. Good morning. For the record, I'm Mike Delitt, Grady Minor engineers, professional engineer there. As Wayne alluded to, we have a dry water management system that would encompass the site. We have three locations on the northwest, northeast, and the south part of the site. The sites, and if you're familiar with it, obviously, it's in a generally higher area in that part of Bonita. And the soils are rather sandy, which is a good thing because being a dry retention system will allow a lot of that water to percolate through the soil proportionally. For a lot of projects, this has quite a bit of water management areas that would be helpful. The project will have to meet the water management district and city of Bonita Springs requirements. And we'll coordinate with staff on using the master model for the city of Bonita Springs to make sure there's no impacts to adjoining properties or surrounding areas. Part of the requirement with the water management district, they're changing the rules right now, but we have nutrient loading requirements we have to meet and also 150% of the required water quality volume would have to be met with this project. There's no exact details on the design right now, but just generally, the system would operate with having a control structure at some point along Dean Street and then discharge out to the right-of-way according to agreements we meet with the city staff on. Just kind of general overview. Can answer any questions on that? Thanks, Mike. One of the things I would mention, too, in the situation we have today, you don't have any water management system and obviously, the post-development, as you've heard us say several and many times, that you end up with a controlled system here where the water that gets collected on the site actually gets diverted into these dry detention systems and then it gets discharged off-site in a controlled manner rather than just the haphazard, you know, the way water moves across the site today. So one of the other issues that we heard from many people talked about, traffic volumes on Dean Street and just speeding along Dean Street. And of course, there's safety concern because we do have an elementary school to the west of here, closer to US 41 or Old 41 Road. And so Jim Banks prepared the traffic analysis and he's also been out on the site observing traffic several times. And I don't think Jim was sworn in. I think he was out in the lobby when you swore us in, so you might need to swear him in.
Sir, tell the truth, the whole truth.
I do. For the record, Jim Banks, I'm a professional engineer in the state of Florida and I'm president of J&amp;B Transportation Engineering. I've been recognized as an expert in the fields of traffic and transportation. I've been recognized as an expert in the fields of traffic and transportation by this city council on numerous past occasions, as well as other governmental entities, as well as in court of law. I have 38 years of experience in this field, so don't let my youthful appearance belie that. Anyhow, my firm did prepare the traffic study for this project. The study was prepared pursuant to the criteria set forth by the City of Bonita Springs. Your staff reviewed the report, and they agreed with the report's findings and conclusions. Now, the study was based upon the development of 48 multifamily dwelling units on the subject site. We then established that these 48 units would generate 38 AM peak hour trips and 41 PM peak hour trips. We then assessed what the, what that additional traffic on the network, how the adjacent road net, road network would operate with these additional trips. And we determined that Dean Street, at project completion, will have a total peak hour, peak demand of 267 trips on the road. That is 31% of the road's capacity. So, that means that there's, at the completion of this project, there is still going to be a 69% surplus of capacity remaining on Dean Street. We also assessed the impacts onto Matheson Avenue and determined that at project completion, there would be a total demand of 162 trips. And this is 19% of that road's available capacity. So, that means at the completion of this project, there is still 81% available road capacity on Matheson. Now, when we evaluate these, the conditions of the surrounding roads, obviously, we take into account what these, what the aspects of these roads are. Oops, I'm going the wrong way. Okay, Dean Street, it functions as a minor collector, and it is actually classified as a minor collector by the City of Bonita Springs. It extends approximately one mile. It runs east-west and extends between Imperial Parkway and Old 41. It does extend a little past Imperial Parkway to the east, but for the purpose of this study, we evaluated between Old 41 and Imperial Parkway. It has full access on the Old 41 at the western limits, and it has full signalized access to Imperial Parkway. It has sidewalks along the roadway. It has a posted speed limit of 25 miles per hour, except within the area of the elementary school, which is posted 15 miles per hour. The elementary school, I'm sure you're aware, is about a quarter-mile to the west of this site. The intersection of Matheson and Dean Street is a four-way stop intersection. That means everyone has to stop at that intersection. These features result in a traffic calming effect, and therefore, Dean Street has low traffic volumes, and it has slow travel speed. And when I'm talking about the low traffic volumes, again, I go back to the fact that only 31% of the road's capacity is going to be utilized at the completion of this project. And therefore, Dean Street does operate at a high level of service. Matheson Avenue, similar characteristics. It runs north-south. It's classified as a minor collector, has a posted speed limit of 30 miles per hour, has signalized access to East Terry Street, has a four-way stop intersection at Matheson and Ragsdale. Again, these features create a traffic calming effect, which result in low traffic volumes and slow travel speeds. Matheson Avenue operates at a high level of service in the fact that only 19% of the road's capacity will be utilized. So, in summary, the traffic study, which again was reviewed by your staff and they agreed to, was that the proposed multifamily development does not significantly or negatively impact the adjacent road network, and all roadways within the project's area of influence operate at a high level of service and have adequate capacity to accommodate the project, the trap will be, the traffic that will be generated by this project. That concludes my testimony, and I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Can we ask questions?
It's coming.
There'll be an opportunity for the public to come up and ask questions.
Would you back up one slide, please? I just need a definition.
Sir.
VH, sorry, VPHPD, vehicles per hour.
Peak direction.
Peak direction.
Yes. That's the way we evaluate road level of service, is what is that highest demand in one direction? And in this case, the highest demand, whether it's eastbound or westbound, was 267 trips at project completion.
Peak demand.
Peak direction.
Peak direction. Thank you.
Yep.
I'm learning.
So, Ms. Dizzo had completed a pretty extensive staff report and presentation, and has gone through the findings for determining whether or not we meet the guidelines for the rezoning to a planned development. And we've also completed that analysis as part of our application preparation, and of course, we conclude that, yes, we're consistent with your Bonita Springs comprehensive plan. You just heard Mr. Banks talk about the traffic impact and that we don't have an impact on Dean Street. And there are other factors. Environmentally speaking, there really aren't any environmental considerations here, other than the four heritage trees that are going to be replaced and mitigated as part of our development order process. Mary also analyzed the deviation that I talked about to allow the reduction to 10 feet between these structures. And we also have looked at any adverse impacts to the neighbors and determined that with our buffers and limitation on building heights and the style of development for these two-family buildings, that they're very consistent with the other single-family and duplex structures that we have in the area. As you go farther west, of course, you have the multifamily project that's on the creek that our firm was involved in several years ago now. But again, we've met all of your criteria for rezoning to a PD, and our team is here to answer questions, and we can provide rebuttal after the fact, after you hear from.
What was that multifamily project you just referred to? What is it?
It's been known as several names, but it's on the south side of Dean Street, across from the elementary school.
Oh, okay. That thing.
Mosaic it was. I'm not sure that's what they're still calling it today.
Lot of parking on the street.
They have on-street parking. That was, that was part of the consideration, and that's what we heard as part of this project, that, you know, what happens when people do have a gathering? Where do they park? And in our particular case, with the garage parking, the driveway parking, and the on-street parking we're providing inside the community, we don't believe we're going to have any spillover impact onto Dean Street or Matheson that people express concern about. Thank you. I'll be happy to answer any questions, or let Mary provide.
Could this project be designed without the deviation to 10 feet?
I'm sorry, I didn't quite understand the first part of that.
Could this project be designed without the deviation requesting minimum separation of 10 feet as opposed to 20 feet?
We haven't laid it out that way. I'm presuming that we can. I don't know if that would result in a net reduction in units, but we're.
Lot is too small. You need that extra, you need to lose that extra 10 feet between the houses to make this project work.
Well, we're asking for the deviation.
I'm really questioning the reason for that particular deviation. From 20 feet, okay, they're duplexes now, 20 feet to 10 feet.
And if I platted these individual lots and tried to put a duplex on them, I'm not required to have a 20-foot building separation for those.
I realize that. I realize that. But you have a choice when you start this thing, given the shape of the lot, given its setting in a built-up community with a lower density than you're proposing, okay? And to get that density you need, I guess to make this project work, you're asking for a pretty significant deviation from 20 feet to 10 feet.
We're definitely asking.
I don't understand the need for that, if you can redesign it to a density that's much more reflective of the surrounding neighborhood.
Well, the, the test, as you heard on the first case, is the comprehensive plan establishes the density for this area to be 11.6 units per acre. That applies to the neighboring properties as well.
But what is the density?
Well, the density ranges depending on the project.
Is it the density of this project?
It, it really depends on what block do you take? Because it's six units per acre.
Take a block, take a block surrounding, you know, flooding.
Right. Nope. And as I explained, there are several factors that go into this. One is, yes, we're asking for density that's more than some of the neighboring properties, but we're under what we can seek under the comprehensive plan. So, your plan, it does matter. That is one of your criteria. It has to be consistent with your comprehensive plan, Mr. Galloway.
That's.
So, I can't ask for something that's not. And from a standpoint, I'm not required to put in a landscape buffer, for instance. Residential to residential under your code does not require one. I have buffers on all four sides of my project. I've limited my height to 35 feet, whereas your comp plan says I can build to 55 feet. So, we think that we have mitigated for that reduction in the setback between structures, because that setback is one that's not new. This, this, this body has seen that setback reduction in other planned developments that I personally worked on, and I know it's been approved for other projects in the city.
With duplexes?
This essentially is a duplex structure.
No, with duplexes, you've seen it reduced to 10 feet in other projects. Yes, no?
No, not just duplex structures.
Okay. So, we've got reductions to 10 feet. We have, according to your plan, 20 feet back-to-back separation. In other words, where the units are back-to-back, you have 20 feet, which gives the occupants 10 feet of backyard, a 10-foot backyard, okay? Last I recall, we live in Florida, where the weather's nice, people live outside a lot. 10 feet enough of a backyard for a duplex? I don't think so. Side yard, five feet, five-foot side yard. That's pretty small, pretty small. To me, this project, first of all, it wouldn't work without, you know, your, your request for this condo arrangement. The site hasn't, the site is the site. The only thing that's changed in this site is the form of ownership. And I don't know what the form of ownership, the form of ownership would allow, the kind of deviations and a defeating of the purpose of these rules that we have for development in Bonita Springs. You're just, this allows you to toss all that out and say, create your own. 20 feet to 10 feet, to me, is, that's an abomination. And the, the backyard of 10 feet for a duplex? That, that to me, that's not workable, not workable at all. Too much density, too small a site. To me, you have to redesign this whole thing to make it fit the site, make it work with the surrounding area. I cannot bring myself to approve a project like this based on the flimsiest of evidence. The condo format, according to the plan, we have to have uses in here that are similar in character, intensity, and impact.
At this point, let's just take a breather for a second. I'm not disregarding anything that you just stated. Perhaps this is a good time to have Mary come and kind of respond to this, these considerations. One, opinions are important to a point, but then again, you have the code you go by, so I need to get that clarified in my own mind.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, I'd ask that, Mary can address that particular point, but I'd ask her to go ahead and go through her whole presentation first.
Yes. Yes, that's what I'm leaning at, yes.
You've heard from the applicant that it's a request for a planned development rezone at 11035 Dean Street, which is what the project began at. Throughout the time, they did acquire additional parcels, and it, I swear I'm young, I'll figure it out. Okay. And so, over time, they now have the five parcels, and you'll see those there. And this is the corner of Dean and Matheson, which we've said a few times. This picture also demonstrates what is existing around the subject properties. You'll see to the east that they have duplexes there. There are a few duplexes to the south, and then single-family structures additionally all throughout.
That little skinny piece is a parcel?
It was deeded as a right-of-way at some point in time, and so, right now, it is acting as its own parcel. It cannot be developed on its own, but for tax purposes right now, it's its own parcel as a right-of-way.
And that house isn't sitting in that parcel?
No, remember that this is a GIS, so the lines aren't always really accurate.
Okay. Understood. Please continue.
So, as previously mentioned, the site currently is zoned TFC 2, which does allow for duplexes, two-family attached dwelling units, single-family homes, and then, single-family homes can also have an accessory dwelling unit within that zoning district. What this request does is it creates a new definition to be permitted within that planned development, which, as previously mentioned, would contain two-family villas attached, which is a building with two dwelling units, but each unit is not on its own lot, so that you can have several of these structures on the same lot under common ownership or condominium ownership. So, back to your previous question about the common ownership, you would only, it, it could be a rental complex where the individuals rent the units, or it could be a condominium where you only own the inside of the unit from the drywall in, so you don't own any of the land. What I also included in there were the existing definitions that we have within our code. So, what's different about this is that, again, they're not individual lots, so it's not a standard 75-by-100-foot lot, which is what TFC 2 would require if they went conventional zoning. It also doesn't categorize as a two-family attached, because again, they don't own the lot, and it doesn't categorize as a multifamily building, because that requires three or more within one conventional building. Therefore, they created their own definition, as you saw. They gave this exhibit showing that the structures would look similar to a two-family duplex-style home that you would expect to see today.
Three or more within one conventional building.
Therefore.
Echo.
Okay. And then, they also showed you the floor plan, which again, looks similar to a duplex, two-family structure that you would see today. We did condition it that there was the option of a two- or a three-bedroom unit, so that if they wanted to change that third bedroom to an office, or make it like some type of flex space, that would be still within the intent of the section. What they also proposed was that each unit be a minimum 1,100 square feet. So, I know there were many concerns of people saying, oh, they're just going to put all these one-bedroom, 800-square-foot apartments in there. That's not what's requested. That's not being proposed here. And the conditions make it closely aligned to what was provided to us. To touch on the comprehensive plan, which we've done a bit already, they are within that 11.6 dwelling units per acre. They're requesting less than that. And actually, throughout the application period and after neighborhood input, they reduced their request from 49 units to 48 units. So, they did remove a unit, and they increased their amenity tract to further serve the residents of that community. Duplex structures and two-family attached and single-family are all permitted within the comprehensive plan for the medium-density residential. And as previously mentioned, they're only requesting the 35-feet height, two stories Policy 1.1.4 does allow that we can permit additional uses, so long as they're similar in character and intensity. And we felt that this request was similar. As I've mentioned before, it's similar to a duplex or a two-family attached, but they are not on individual lots. That's the difference. The transportation element, it's on a constructed roadway. They're providing pathways that we require or can seek deviations if they're done administratively, but their master council plan has been reviewed by our staff. We also have Tom Ross, our traffic engineer, on the line, if you have questions for him. And there was a lot of comment about traffic. These are public streets, so Public Works will take another look at this application at the time that it comes in, and see if additional measures are required. But a lot of people talked about speeding cars. That would be more of a law enforcement issue. And then, we also talked about parking, which they are meeting the code requirements. They, that's required to have two spaces per unit plus 10% guest parking. We went so far as to make sure that the garage parking space can accommodate a We went so far as to make sure that the garage parking space can accommodate a required parking space plus a garbage can. You know, so many times you can't fit everything, and that would cause excess parking to be on the street. So the applicant has worked to make sure that they have met that code requirement. And once it comes down to actual development time, and of course, once these sites are occupied, if they did need additional parking, they can always figure out a way to add more with their on-street parking for their internal driveway that they have. So the schedule of uses is pretty standard, that's included in there, and again, it includes that definition. Previously, when the project first started, they were requesting individual units as well, similar to other projects that we have, but they have narrowed it down to, they're solely requesting the two-family villa attached at this time. So what you've been seeing is what you should be able to expect. The proposed development regulations that I mentioned earlier, eleven hundred square feet minimum per unit, again, they don't own the individual lots, it will be under common ownership. So you're not going, it is a five-foot setback. They don't have a yard, because they don't own the lot. So as you've seen, they are requesting that ten feet in between buildings, and then the cross-sections show you the distances between everything else. But as far as perimeter setbacks and all other code requirements, they are complying with what the planned development district requires. So back to that deviation, we do have many projects, two-family attached duplex, single-family homes, that do have a ten-foot separation. That ten-foot is typically required for fire code. Where you would seek caution with a deviation for this would be a taller building. If they were putting in a high-rise, we're obviously going to look a lot more sternly at that, to make sure they're not just ten feet apart. We want to make sure that fire's okay with it, and that it's not going to go against the criteria for what a deviation requires. And again, we don't feel that this deviation would go against preserving and promoting the public health, safety, and welfare, or the achievement of the objectives of the planned development. I've also included the cross-section that they had on their master concept plan. Again, we went very into depth with the applicant to make sure that what you see is what we can expect out there. That includes, we worked with drainage, we worked with making sure that they, the residents have sidewalks, and that their driveways would, again, still allow a vehicle to fit before it interferes with the sidewalk. So you will still have the eighteen-foot driveway and then a sidewalk, rather than cars just parked over the sidewalks and people can't really utilize them. Within the staff report, which I asked to incorporate at this time, you'll see all of my analysis and conclusions. But essentially, we landed where this project does comply with the mass, with the comprehensive plan. Within zoning, it is consistent. The area is residential, it's made up of two-family structures, single-family structures, that's what's requested here. We cannot dictate ownership, and therefore, I cannot impose that on them. But the applicant has worked thoroughly and diligently with us to be consistent with what we feel is appropriate and compatible with that area. Do you have any questions at this time?
Mary.
And then, I'm sorry, if I may, really quickly. In regards to safety concerns that the neighbors or residents had conveyed to us, again, law enforcement is definitely someone that they can call. They've also spoken with City Hall. If there are matters that they can do to lower the speeds of those roads, or enforce more stop signs, that has nothing to do with the development of the site, those are current conditions that the city and law enforcement would need to take into consideration. And then, excuse me. There was also a question of if they're just renters, will they actually maintain the site? Again, we cannot dictate ownership, but we do have a property maintenance code, and that would have to be complied with at all times. If the site is under common ownership, which is required, that would be the entity that we would cite for code cases if that was the case. I'm sorry.
Yeah, Mary, on the issue that came up by one of the members regarding the, the ten-foot rear yard, my understanding of such structures, condominium associations, the owners of the individual units do not own land.
Correct.
Okay, so that becomes.
Exactly, so if they're, if they're allowed to put chairs out there based off of their documents, you know, they're typically not allowed to put fences up or anything like that, that would delineate an area.
That comes later when they have their association and all that other good stuff.
Correct.
All right, thank you.
My comment was not in a vacuum, Ben. It's, you know, I don't care who owns the land, a ten-foot backyard is not adequate, it's as simple as that.
It's common property.
It doesn't make any difference, a ten-foot backyard. I have a question on compatibility, too. In your planned development analysis, you say the request is compatible with existing or planned uses in the surrounding area. And your answer is, or the justification is, the surrounding properties are residential in nature and include single-family and duplex structures. The developed density for those lots is less at this time, but may be redeveloped to a higher density at a later point. That doesn't make any sense to me at all. As a justification for a higher density, simply because sometime in the future, it may be developed, the surrounding area, it may be developed to a higher density. Isn't that true everywhere?
Well, it was a question of compatibility. So we find that the use requested is compatible, and then know that they are all within the same Benita Plan, future land use designation. Therefore, they can all be redeveloped to that density, because it's within the right.
Do you know what the density is in this running area?
Eleven-point-six dwelling units per acre.
Not the planned density, that allowed, the current.
The current density.
Built density, density in the surrounding area. I couldn't get an answer from the applicant. Do you know what it is?
Well, each, each side is different, but at one point, it's two-point-two dwelling units, another side, I think, is eight-point-four.
Per acre?
Yes. And I can go back to the aerial to show you what's currently there.
When you say site, you mean lots within this aerial you're about to show us?
Yeah, so what Mr. Galloway is referencing is, what is the actual density that's there now? So how many actual dwelling units are there per acre within this? And I, I don't have those exact numbers with me right now, but this is to show you, like, here, they have the eight duplexes. Some of these are duplexes, some are single-family homes.
Let's do that, let's look at the duplexes to the, if this is oriented north, south, east, west. It is. Yeah, right there, where you got your cursor. Those are four duplexes?
Yes.
Actual duplexes, not these attached villa things.
They're duplexes, so you would know the difference, because two-family attached are on individual lots, so you would see lot lines and.
Those are individual lots, okay.
But this is one shared big lot, so it's two units, it's a duplex.
And they have the setbacks, building setbacks away from the lot lines?
I believe these were conventionally built, so they would meet our TFC two code, which would be a twenty-foot rear setback.
From the rear, but the sides are seven feet or something?
If, I don't know, the width right there, if they're seventy-five feet wide, it's a seven-and-a-half-foot setback. If, it's a fifty-foot wide lot, which I don't think those are if they were conventionally built, fifty-foot, fifty-foot wide lots have a five-foot setback.
Just a moment, please, please. Public comments will be part of our, in a moment. Anybody else on the board have any questions of the, of the staff member, Mary, at this point?
I guess the only question is, is this attached villa definition with common ownership, that currently is not something.
Correct, it's not in our existing code, they would be.
It's not in the existing code. And, and it hasn't been.
It has been used other, other.
It's in variances, there have been variances, I, this, I remember approving.
Yes, it's not a definition we have, but other cases have requested.
The answer, the answer is, and I'll, if, I'll ask the applicant to clarify, but the, the reason for the separate definition is that if you are, if you have a larger site like this, where you want to have unified control, and you're going to have a planned development, and you're not going to have lots, and Florida law allows you, and doesn't allow the city, to distinguish between a land condominium or a, a use in common ownership, like, like a rental community, then our definition of duplex does not fit, but it is essentially a duplex. And because that is the, the form of ownership they're going to move forward with, as a, as a consolidated and controlled site, they're, they're using essentially two fat, two, two-home family attached as a, as a stand-in for duplex.
Yeah, I understand that, but it, because it's not currently, has not been currently processed through the city processes and approved as a, an official designation.
Housing type.
This, doesn't this open a door for making the gray area even grayer in other places? And should, should that be, and then, and then we have a precedent that we're going to also, in, you know, two or three months, say, oh, we did it here, so now we got to do it here, too? I mean, shouldn't the city be taking a more responsible position of defining this for us?
So, so this board actually recommended to the city council that we adopt the two fam, the, the attached villas.
Right, right, I do remember that now, yes.
For purposes of what the definition, why the definition here is more appropriate than, say, using existing definition, is if we were use, say, just say duplexes, that we're going to allow duplexes, then anywhere in the code where it said duplexes, which would be referring to properties on separate lots, you'd be running into conflicts. So by calling it something different than that and keeping it self-contained, it is self-contained only to this planned development. That, that's, that's the rationale for, until we develop those regulations. What those regulations will ultimately look like is they'll probably be a one paragraph, one paragraph that says two-family attached is the same as this. We'll just have to figure out separate setbacks and other things for the, when they're, those are used in a lot configuration.
But there's no current policy.
Correct.
You said this board made a recommendation to city council regarding this?
Yes, I believe you, actually, you made the most.
We, we did make that recommendation. With that? But I don't. But I thought that was, I thought that was for one project. I don't remember us saying where we should, we think city council should look at this.
If I may, for the record, Jaclyn Jensen, this came up with a different unit type with the Riverbend RPD, and that was a single-family dwelling under condominium ownership. But what I would make it clear to this board is, really what we're dealing with here is an ownership question. The dwelling unit in itself of what they're proposing, once it's condominiumized, is a two-family attached product. It will go through building permitting, it will meet the Florida Building Code standards for two-family attached with firewalls and building construction. So the unit in itself is a two-family attached unit. It's just because of the way that they're proposing it with condominiums and unified control and ownership. That's why there's just a little tweaking with the definitions and the schedule of uses. But it is no different than any other PDs that have come before the city, or even the predecessor of Lee County. You have condominium units for single-family or two-family attached throughout the city. You have it in Benita Bay, you have it in Riverbend RPD, you have it in Brendan Cove, you have it in Hacienda Village, you have it in other parts of the city. So this is not something that's uncommon, it's just, it all comes down to ownership.
So when are we going to put it in the code?
I think it's more of an ownership and probably, in this case, it was maybe dotting an I and crossing a T. But that's definitely something, it all boils down to the ownership of the units and the lots. So again, per this board, if we want to make that recommendation to council, I know now that we have some new city council members that have been in, or will be sworn into office tomorrow, there will be some strategic planning workshops and whatnot, and that could be something that can be brought to their attention for direction.
Really, tomorrow? We don't wait till January?
Tomorrow.
Tomorrow.
Does this change, does this definition, as we're looking at it today, in some way allow for higher density?
You have your Benita Plan, which has your maximum density.
I understand that.
What this does provide for, and you'll see in there what planned development rezoning can do, is instead of each lot being the seventy-five-by-a-hundred-feet, they can now put the units closer and therefore probably fit more.
And that, they're obviously motivated to do that.
Or else they would have came in and did that conventionally, which they can do, you know, administratively.
I think it's important, and I don't know if, if Mary wants to touch on it, this, the future land use calls for more density in this area, because it's a transition area. The intent is, the city has put a significant amount of money into the downtown core, into making it walkable, having higher densities. Rather than the city growing out to the east, the core, the focus has been to have as much infill as possible. In order to have infill, you, you're trying to move towards this. Now, unlike to the west, where you have the mosaic project that was mentioned earlier, which is true multi-family going vertical, this is a transition into the existing single-family. For purposes of just one more clarification on the ownership, if this project came in, they could come in with this as a PD calling out for individual lots for each one of these, these duplexes, and call them duplexes at that point. My, I suspect that the concern of the neighbors would be with a ten-foot backyard and all these things, they'd be concerned that the individual duplexes would not take care of the property as well as a consolidated condominium complex with one ownership under these circumstances. So there, there is a little bit of additional logic for why you want to call these things out differently.
Okay.
Okay, at this time.
I was, one more question. Because it's infill, it should be dealt with more sensitively and with more care for the, its impact on the surrounding uses than a project like this out in the middle of a swamp somewhere?
Absolutely, and we worked with the applicant, and as they mentioned, they put in those buffers. We didn't, we didn't recommend a wall, because we don't think you should wall off something that's similar and compatible with existing uses around it. So they did that in those buffers, though, to provide, you know, an enhanced landscape view for those that are already existing.
I'm not talking about the project embellishment. I noticed that you can make room with the modifications and new development standards that the development, developer proposes, you can maximize the density, but there's no room to do complete streets, the quote, "complete streets", which calls for a certain set of amenities on the street, and pedestrian walkways, bicycles, all that kind of stuff.
There's no deviation requested for complete streets.
I think, did they say they're going to make a payment in lieu? Because they can't meet complete streets, they're going to do payment in lieu?
They are not requesting a deviation from complete streets. They have the ability to request a payment in lieu, and if they satisfy that criteria, they have the ability to use that.
So that's still up in the air, whether or not they do complete streets, or make a payment? Right?
Again, they're not requesting a deviation from it, so that will be reviewed at the time of development order.
Okay, so it's still up in the air.
But they will still have to comply with our complete streets code, which either says put it in or pay the fee in lieu.
Okay.
Anybody else on the board have any questions or comments? Thank you, Mary. At this point, I'd like to ask for a public comment on this particular project.
I had a lot of questions, I, Bruce, I appreciate your input.
Please state your name.
Name, please.
Oh, my name is Jackie Colombo, I live at twenty-seven, seven-eleven Harold Street. And I'm just, I have a couple of questions for Mr. Banks. I wondered if he was ever driving in Benita Springs between Terry and Dean, Old Forty-One and Imperial at four PM Monday through Friday. Almost every location, it's impossible to make a left-hand turn. So after school lets out on Dean Street, the traffic is almost bumper to bumper from Old Forty-One to Imperial, Monday through Friday. And so I object to, you know, the potential of, what was it, a hundred and thirty-eight more cars being added to that street at that time of day. Also, my husband and I walk a dog on Dean Street every night, and we're nearly run over by bicycles about six times every evening, because the street is narrow enough with automobile traffic that the bike riders are on the streets. And so to, to preserve their own life, they're on sidewalks, and, and it's very dangerous for me to walk my dog, but I have to walk my dog. And so I'm just wondering if the traffic engineer considered. Um, and, um, so I'm just wondering if the traffic engineer considered bicycle traffic, because, um, because that's a real thing. These electric bikes are quiet, you don't hear them coming up on you, they come up fast. And the streets are just so busy that, that the bikes can't be on the streets. Um, the other thing, density problem for me is that if you've got, um, forty-eight units, each one, it's beautiful. I looked at the, the, um, things a couple of days ago. The, each, each condo has three bedrooms. So you have the potential of six people be- living in each one of those sides. So twelve people potentially could live in each building. And so I object to the, having ten feet of a backyard, because what are kids gonna do? Just sit and look at their phones, I suppose? Is that what we want them to do? Um, and, um, the space between the backyards of those two rows of houses in the center, uh, where does that runoff go to, um, when you have these big storms a- a- all summer long? Uh, is there enough drainage between those two rows of houses? Uh, that just seems like an awful lot of water to be, uh, taken care of by those little tiny, narrow, um, um, water catchment areas that are shown on the map. And, um, anyway, I feel like it's beautiful. The design is beautiful, but it needs to be put on eight acres, not four acres. I think that half the density would make it a considerable, uh, make a considerable, um, acceptability. And so I feel like, why do we have to have forty-eight residences? Why can't we have twenty-four? And it's probably all dollars and cents. It's cause somebody wants to make more money per acre in Benita Springs, and I just don't think that's necessary.
Thank you for your comments. Does any one of the, uh, people associated with this project care to respond?
Do you wanna wait till the rest of the public comment?
Okay, let's wait them all. I guess we'll hear our public comment. Go right ahead. Next person, please, and state your name.
Hi, my name is Deirdre Flint, um, and I live on Harold Street. And I just wanna say, uh, the zoning board, you are standing on the shoulders of giants, because when I, uh, went from part-time living in Santa Bauta, I wanna live down here full-time. I searched far and wide for a beautiful little town. And I came over the bridge and saw the Wonder Gardens and saw, I thought, this is Camelot, this is Shangri-La. Whoa, there's Shangri-La, and you did that, zoning did that. This is so gorgeous, it's such a gorgeous place, okay? We have a, we have a upholstery place right next to like a bar. That's downtown Benita Springs. It's unlike any other place. Naples, nice, but soulless. Venice, nice, but soulless. Benita Springs is incredible, and it's because of zoning. It's because of zoning. I chose to live in a place with a TFC two. Um, and so, uh, what's going on here is that, uh, we're turning TFC two into, um, into medium density. That's not why I chose to move to Harold Street, that's not why. And also, I'd like to say that, um, okay, um, Grady Minor, um, I'm sure you do lovely work, and, uh, we welcome you in the neighborhood, um, but, uh, are, you're owned by Pape Dawson, right?
Yeah.
So that's Texas, and Pape Dawson is being sued, uh, by their neighbors.
Can you please stick to the issue here?
Yeah, okay, they're being sued because of flooding, of flooding, okay? So, um, that is, and then finally, I want to, uh, read a note from my neighbor, uh, who's, couldn't be here today. Her name's Diane Walker, and she says, um, uh, "How many established, uh, federal, state, county, and city laws have to be conceded in order to shoehorn this project into this limited space? Existing residents have been expected to adhere to existing law. Now it seems that adherence to the law no longer applies. There are a number of examples where this, where these concessions have been made resulting in poor flooding drainage, such as Laurel Meadows and Sarasota, reducing traffic safety and parking issues. We were told numerous times that in the community information meeting, that this is not a rezoning of land use in the area. As I read the latest notice, this is from Diane Walker of, uh, Matheson Street, I am now seeing it is, in fact, a rezoning from TFC two to RPD. That is a huge shift from the stated intention in those previous me- meetings." She concludes, "Please do not do this to community, to this community." And then she says, which I don't agree with, "A lovely park where the community's children have room to run and play would be a much preferred alternative." Obviously, it's great for these people to make money, uh, uh, and I support it. I just, uh, think that it could be half the size. Thank you so much."
Where's Harold Street?
Harold Street is, um, one street.
In relationship to what we're looking at up here?
Yeah, so. Okay, so here's Matheson.
Yeah.
So over here is Harold.
Okay.
So one over.
Cause that's, you're two out of two on Harold Street.
Wha-
Your, the previous speaker was also Harold Street.
Yeah, oh, okay, yeah, so Harold Street, yes, thank you.
Hi, uh, my name's Al Faric. Uh, I'm a property owner. Uh, this is our property right here, so we're directly adjacent. We live on, uh, Roslin Drive, my family and I. And, um, I disagree with the expert on the traffic. If you live there, you become an expert, and the traffic there is, is bad as it is. Uh, if you try to make a left-hand turn, as he described, on Dean Street and Old Forty-One, uh, that is dangerous as, as it stands right now. Uh, we do have the school, when s- uh, when the school, uh, Benita Springs School lets out, there are people picking up their children, the buses. Uh, it's, it, it's a prime peak demand twice a day, like clockwork. So, um, yeah, as the neighbor described, there is, um, a lot of bicycle traffic and heavy pedestrian traffic on our street, on Dean Street. Some of the other, other things I disagree with is, uh, the parking. I don't think that this is, this density is going to, uh, provide for enough parking. Uh, forty-eight units times two cars plus visitors. Uh, I just don't see, I just don't see it accommodating, uh, all those cars. My, my wife and I feel that this is, this is just, this density is way too high. Um, I think it, it, it can be characterized as greed. Uh, there might be a paper contractor or a paper developer that just came in to buy property that's not zoned, and then, um, rezone it, roll over the residents, you know, with no, no care about the long-term impacts of, of the local community. Uh, this, uh, Benita Springs is known for small-town charm, and we'd like to keep it that way. I have also, I had a question. Uh, is the perimeter setback ten feet, or is it less than ten feet? Mary?
You can answer, they'll answer their questions at the end.
Okay. I was just wondering if, uh, if the perimeter setback is actually ten feet, because we're talking, I, I understood that it's ten feet between the buildings, but maybe not behind the building. So, um, is that gonna affect this line? So I'm just wondering what the setback is right there.
This says fifteen feet.
Eighteen feet?
Fifteen.
Fifteen.
One five.
Okay, thank you, thank you. And, um, a, a lot of people in our neighborhood showed up at the firehouse meetings. There wasn't one person that was for this project. But I think their voices need to be heard. A lot of my neighbors are working right now, they can't be here. And, um, they, I didn't hear one person in our neighborhood for this. Is there a threshold of how many immediate neighbors need to respond to, uh, to say no? Because everybody I saw at the meeting said no. Anyway, thank you for listening to me.
Thank you. Anybody else wants to make a public comment? Yes, sir.
Hi, Sam Colombo, um, just a couple of comments, cause we've heard, heard of, heard most of this. Um, this does seem like a project where somebody told a kid to, uh, pack as many homes as, as you can into this lot. And it's, it is pretty dense, and I agree with Mr. Galloway on that. Um, this home here flooded during Irma, so just so you know, it did. And, um, and we're gonna have more Irma's apparently. And the other thing is, you know, eighteen-foot driveway, I have a medium-sized pickup truck, it's eighteen feet long, and that's not a big one. And so people with, you know, Chevy Suburbans or bigger vehicles, eighteen feet's not gonna work in that driveway. Just, just so people, you know, pay attention to that. So, um, as far as parking, you know, right now, the, there's homes here, and if they have parties, you know, there's cars parked along Dean, and that's gonna be pretty continuous with, there's just not enough parking inside of this, this complex to accommodate visitors. It's just not gonna happen, so those are my comments. Thank you.
Sir, I missed your name.
Sam Colombo.
Sam, the house that flooded, the, the house itself actually flooded, or the street flooded?
The house flooded.
Water in the?
It got eight inches in the.
In the footprint of the house.
It's a little, it's a little lower than, than, we live up behind him, it's a little lower than us. The water came up to our driveway, but didn't get into the house, so just.
And that was Irma, not Ian.
That was Irma.
Okay.
Cause we had a rainy week before that, and then the storm came, so, um, it happens.
Yes, had a lot of rain.
Good morning. My name is Zach Smith, and, uh, I live right there. So I live right in front of the, uh, proposed project. Um, aside from living there for many, many years, I also am a downtown business owner, so I understand the need for infill projects. I've looked at this property for well over a decade and known that one day there would be development there. But we have to ask ourselves, is this smart development? Um, I'll get to my questions later, but I wholeheartedly disagree with the traffic study. I live there, I see it every day, I know what happens. The city recently instituted a no-through-truck traffic ordinance in downtown, redirecting traffic down Dean Street. Uh, when we built Mosaic, no changes were made to Dean Street. That's almost three hundred units. The school continues to grow, and Lee County Schools is anticipating demolishing Benita Springs Elementary and building an even larger school with higher attendance. At what point are we gonna look and say, there needs to be improvements to Dean Street? This project is coming in with forty-eight proposed units. At a minimum, we have to assume there's probably gonna be dual occupancy, maybe husband and wife, maybe two roommates. They've proposed a single-car garage and one parking spot in front. So that's musical chairs, every day somebody needs to go to work. Not to mention the fact that most people use their garage for storage, especially when you're looking at an eleven-hundred-square-foot unit. So they do not have enough parking. Um, I do believe that I counted about thirteen guest parking spots, so not even enough for half the tenants to have a guest. Many families have teenage children. In this current economy and housing crisis, we often have more than one adult living in these units. There is simply not enough parking on property. Holidays are coming up, you wanna host your family for Thanksgiving, where are these people going to park? The musical chairs is a problem enough, yet alone guests. If you wanna look at problems with parking, go talk to Mosaic. They don't have enough parking on their property. That's why we're seeing it overflow on Dean Street. Yes, they put that there, but the overflow is now hitting Felts and Old Forty-One. They do not have enough parking on their property, even though it was built to the code. Um, the traffic study said that we have thirty-eight AM cars. So if we have dual occupancy at forty-eight, that's ninety-six individuals living there, only thirty-eight of those people are going to work every day? Something doesn't seem right. There's just not common sense in these studies. Um, sorry, checking my notes here. There's been a lot of talk about this project being compatible with the current, uh, development in, in the neighborhood. Um, you made a good point about just because these projects could happen down the road, doesn't mean that they're there now. Look at the surrounding neighborhoods. Yes, we do have some duplexes, but not duplexes that have been crammed together on one parcel like this. As pointed out, these duplexes here were built in individual parcels, so they have much larger setbacks, much more parking, much larger interior square footage. They are not duplexes being crammed into a four-and-a-half-acre parcel. Um, so this does not comply and is not compatible with the current development that surrounds it. Um, my two questions were, is this going to be a gated community? If so, we all know how those gates can back up, and if those gates back up, then you were backing up onto Dean Street and Matheson, creating further traffic problems. Uh, another question, they talked about how they're doing a lot for drainage, but this is open land. There's already no impervious surfaces on it, so the land on its own is doing the best it can do for drainage. So if they're gonna be putting impervious surfaces on it, um, let me rephrase that. Are they gonna be putting impervial- impervious surfaces on it, including all the roadways, driveways, everything that is not under roof to help mitigate any possible flooding? Um, I guess I will leave my note, which is saying, there needs to be smart development. Just cause the code says we can do it, doesn't mean it's the best for the tenants and the best for the community. I'm all for the project, but it needs to be done in a smarter way. They have no, uh, they don't have enough parking, they haven't addressed traffic, and they don't have amenities for their tenants. Thank you very much.
What's your business?
I own the brewery on Old Forty-One Ceremony Burn.
Is there any other person who wishes to speak on this project, and if, at this point? Cause after that, we'll have the applicant respond to some of those issues. State your name, please.
My name is Frederick Kulu. Could you put, please, the, uh, the other graphic with the, sir? Hello? Can you put the other pictures? Can somebody put their things? Thank you very much. I'd like to see the conceptual drawing. Right, so, um, that's correct. Well, not one person was actually accepting this project during the last meeting. Uh, I do live on Matheson Avenue, and in fact, um, as you just learned, my neighbor told you that we add water on that, uh, street. I'd like to show the, um, where the water is. Can you, I'd like to see where the old, the new houses, you know, the beautiful drawings that they have done. Thank you. So, um, pretty much, no, I would like to see with, uh, the, the traffic, I mean, uh, you know, the same map with all the houses.
Eric, could you address the board, please?
Yes, I would like to see, uh, please, the, uh, conceptual drawing of, uh, all the houses with the forty-eight houses proposed, please. Uh, so, I have to see it, they, the, the first presentation was much better. I mean, uh, they were talking about the two acres with only seven houses. This is not even this four-point-six acres with forty-eight dwelling. I agree with my neighbors, it should be not forty-eight, it should be at, uh, maybe half of it, that would be maybe much better. Yeah, thank you very much for the join. So what I can see here, uh, I live on, on Dean Street, on Matheson Avenue and Dean Street, it's right there. So, uh, this exit is actually not on Dean. The property is actually on Dean, right? I mean, that's what it says here. It says, uh, you know, one-one-zero-three-five Dean Streets. So, uh, why is Matheson deserved to have an exit or an entrance? And I can guarantee you that most people will choose this one to get out, not this one, because this is actually very high traffic during four to five and in the morning as well. As my neighbor mentions, this has a little sidewalk, and people are going so fast on their bicycle. Electric bikes, thirty-five miles an hour, sometimes they do fifteen or twenty-five, they don't even stop at the stop sign. I live there, as I said, I am also professional, because I live here and I see what's happening. They cross so fast, they don't even stop, uh, walkers, and there's a lot of people who like to walk Benita, cause Benita is a beautiful city, that's why I decided to come here, and I love it. Much better than Marco Island, Naples, and everybody else. So, and I would like it to be a little bit nicer neighborhood as well. We already have something like this going on at the end of Matheson Avenue, right? It's a, a lot of high d- density. We also have something like this across the street, what you guys refer to as Mosaic. Uh, we also have a new one, we just got built before the school as well. So, traffic for me is one issue. Um, the, this exit for me is one issue, because I live right there, and I don't wanna see like one hundred cars. I would assume, I say one hundred, it could be way more. As Zach mentioned, it's a three-bedroom, two-to-three-bedroom, it's gonna be a lot more people than that. They know, they have to work, because they don't, you know, if they lived in this type of houses. They have to work, because they don't, you know, if they lived in this type of houses, they will have to work, right? If not, they will buy a castle somewhere. So, for me here, the presentation just before, I'm glad I came earlier, because I learned a lot from you guys. Thank you very much. It says forty percent open space per lot, it will be, that's what I heard. And it says the lot coverage is forty percent. I don't know what the percentage is on this one here, but it looks to me as a lot lesser than that. Also, I learned something earlier, and it says about the ten feet, the twenty feet. Well, you know, I don't want that ten or twenty feet be an issue with this, for the dry detention water, because that is a big problem here. Over there, right there here, you got the system for the gray water. No, nothing mentioned about the gray water for here. So, this system here has to be redone. I talked to the guy, he says it's too old, even for now. So, it's not gonna be compatible for forty-eight more. Terry Street has water. You know, it can drain the water very well. Here, there's no issue, I mean, there's nothing here. The water has to go somewhere. Maybe it goes in a dry detention, but right now, this helps us not to have that water going on the street. When it does flood, my neighbors is correct, it goes in, and it goes here, and floods here a lot, okay? So, I don't think the dry detention will help me. When you say thirty-five feet, I'm not sure if it's thirty-five feet above the sea level or above the ground, okay? This is one feet less than the street already. That is why, the reason why we had water on Irma.
Eric, can you finish up your comments, please?
Yes, sir.
Because you're going over time, and I just wanted to finish it up, if you could.
Well, I was here at eight-thirty, so I gave my time to other people to as well to speak, but I agree with you. So, therefore, I will not, with what I see here, I didn't see any difference from the first presentation to this presentation, and I do not agree with this forty-eight dwelling. Like my neighbors, twenty-four would be nice, thank you.
Excuse me, excuse me, I'd like to ask you a question.
Sure, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Well, we're not finished, he has to, he has to finish, that's what the rules are.
No, I get to ask you a question.
I don't know your name, sorry.
My name's Neil Montgomery. Sir, do you have?
And you are?
I'm an attorney for the applicant. Do you have a degree in civil engineering?
Oh, we're doing that route, okay.
Do you have, sir?
No, I do not.
Do you have any expertise in drainage?
That's what I'm asking you to question.
Please.
Chairman.
And my time is off, four minutes.
The applicant does have the right to cross-examine witnesses, so if there's, rather than waiting to the end, I think this would probably be faster to do it this way, while he's up at the stand.
I was not accusing, by the way, so I'm getting accused right now, so I don't know.
No, sir, I'm trying to ask a question.
Okay.
Sir, do you have a degree in transportation?
Asked, then answered.
Or transportation?
I did answer that question.
Do you have a degree in transportation planning or transportation engineering?
No, but like my neighbor says, I'm an expert too, because I live there, so I can see with my own eyes. What's your points, please?
Do you have any expertise in traffic analysis?
I am, I'm an expert, because I live here, correct.
Okay, we need to have some water here.
Yes. I give my time to, uh...
Thank you. Are there any other comments to be made before we hear from the applicant? Public comment.
Yeah, Rick Steinmeier, I happen to be homeless again, since I got flooded out again on the beach. I live in Hampton, it's close by. I see these buildings are set, this is six feet, okay? So, you got ten feet between two buildings. Now, where's the air conditioner compressor gonna be? That's another three feet. Where is the electric meter gonna be? It has to be elevated, then if it's elevated, then you have to put steps up, so the guy can read the meter. A seventy, a fifty-foot lot has a five-foot setback. Now, he says it's a ten-foot. Well, it's ten-foot, you got two houses, and five is five, is ten. But that's five, that's six. You got a ten-foot backyard, backyard. Where's the pool gonna go, if you wanna put a pool? You can't go pool in there. I was concerned about the air compressor, the air conditioning compressors. Where in the past, on like Bonita Beach, is fifty-foot lots. So, that gets a five-foot setback. You're not supposed to put anything on that five-foot setback. But, over the years, they've been putting these air conditioners out right next to the neighbor's bedroom. I guess they don't get air conditioners, but it's not covered in this particular setup. Where like, you know, you could put it in the front yard, backyard, or on the roof, but you're not supposed to put it in between the houses. So, my particular preference is people own property, they're allowed to build on it, but the government tells them what they can do. And this is more density than we really need, a three-bedroom, you know, there's a hundred people or whatever. And the traffic study, so it's only gonna be nineteen percent. Well, how about the hundred percent are already on the road, so I got problems with this. Thank you.
Thank you. Any more in the way of public comment on this project? Okay, anybody, either the applicant and/or staff, to respond to some of the issues that were raised by the public?
Mr. Chairman, would it be possible for us to just take a short break, and let us put our rebuttal together?
We can, it's ten fifty-three, can we come back at eleven? Would that be sufficient time?
Sure.
All right, let's take a recess until...
Eleven ten.
Damn hippies. I was the damn hippie.
Yeah?
We're live.
Are we back?
Okay, I'd like to reconvene the meeting, dealing with the Dean Street project proposal. At this point, is any person representing the applicants have any response they'd like to make at this time?
Yes, sir, we'd like to have Mr. Banks come up, because obviously, one of the biggest concerns or questions was traffic, and I'd like Mr. Banks to address those questions and concerns.
Thank you.
Okay, again, for the record, Jim Banks. I want to start off by informing the Planning Commission that I am a resident of southwest Florida since nineteen eighty-six, where I began my career as a traffic engineer. So, I have been here for quite a while. One of the residents actually asked if I was familiar with the area. I have driven... I have driven in Benita Springs numerous occasions. I've driven on Dean Street many occasions, Matheson Street, West Terry Street, Benita Beach Road. As a matter of fact, I put together the access management plan along Benita Beach Road when it was under Lee County's, when the city of Benita Springs was actually still under Lee County jurisdiction. So, I do have a lot of experience in this area. I'm very familiar with the area. One of the, I'm sorry, I need to get my notes. So, I want to explain to you how these traffic studies are prepared because I just don't pull numbers out of the air or anything like that. The city of Benita Springs actually commissions a separate independent engineering firm to collect data on your old streets. You're probably aware of this, but I just need for the public's information. I think it's important to put it on the record. And so, this independent company goes out and does all the traffic counts and then they publish this report. So, when I tell you what the traffic volumes are on Dean Street or East Terry Street or Matheson Street, those traffic, that traffic data was not established by me. It was an independent engineering firm that has no association with this project. So, that data is factual. It's published every year and it's for public consumption. So anyhow, that's the data that we use. Now, we estimate the volume of traffic generated from these sites based upon surveys of similar developments. Again, it's an independent, it's a whole separate agency that provides this type of data and it's based on historical traffic counts or has historical traffic patterns associated with similar projects. In this case, we based our trip estimates on other developments similar to this where you have Twin Villa developments. So, again, we just didn't come up and just decide what these numbers were. They were, they were established by independent engineering agencies, again, that have nothing to do with this project. As it turns out, as I told you, I've been on these streets, driven on these streets many a times in the past, but I did go out yesterday and do, and did some updated observations, field observations, and I did do it during school hours. We observed the morning drop-off when most of the students are dropped off in the morning. School starts, I think the start of school is 8:45 a.m. or 8:55 a.m. or something like that. But we started our observations beginning at 7:30 in the morning and we concluded our observations around 9:00 a.m. in the morning. And then we went back out and started our observations at 2:00 p.m. and school ends at 3:10 p.m. and we stayed onsite until about 4:30 and made observations. And I can assure you, and I will submit to you, that I did not observe what was, some of the residents have expressed as what they had saw out there. Now, I'm not saying that what they said wasn't true. I'm sure it's like anything, at some point in time, over, you know, a period of time, you will observe anomalies in traffic patterns. For example, let's say that there's a crash at the intersection of Imperial Parkway and Dean Street. Yeah, the traffic can back up in those situations, but we did not observe that at the timeframes that were suggested that you heard earlier today. Doesn't mean that if something doesn't happen or it can even be a situation at the intersection of Imperial Parkway and Benita Beach Road that backs up traffic on Imperial that could prohibit people on Dean Street from accessing Imperial Parkway. Now, with that said, I also want to remind you that this community, this neighborhood, has three primary points of ingress and egress. So, if there is a situation on one of these roads, a crash or something like that, residents of this neighborhood have the opportunity to gain access to their neighborhood or leave their neighborhood by either Matheson Avenue, which again is a signalized access out onto East Terry Street. They also have access to Old 41 and they have access to Imperial Parkway. So, there are options. There's not one point of ingress and egress. We did observe the school operation yesterday and as a matter of fact, the sheriff was actually out there monitoring the traffic and I did see a person get a speeding ticket. So, the sheriff department is patrolling that, that street. As far as the comment regarding the use of electric bicycles on your sidewalk, I'm not sure if the city council has passed a specific adopt ordinance that addresses electric vehicles or electric bicycles yet, but if that's not an ordinance, that's something that could be passed. I know that you're not allowed to use a motorized vehicle on sidewalks, but if that's something that needs to be passed, it would be a law enforcement issue. Again, it has nothing to do with this project. The implication is, is that if we develop this project, how does that make it worse? It doesn't. It's an existing condition that can only be addressed by law enforcement. This project obviously has, has no ability to decide who gets to be on the sidewalk and who doesn't. So, with that, I conclude my testimony. If you have any questions.
Mr. Banks, when you do your traffic analysis, some of the folks suggested that you didn't look at the traffic that's already there. When you do your analysis, are you required to look at the background trips?
Yes, ma'am, yes.
And when you layer on, my turn, probably not technical, the trips from this project, are you required to use I T E numbers?
That's correct.
And are you also required to look at a historic growth rate to factor in?
That's right, and we did apply a very conservative growth rate to the background traffic. We've, the report actually overestimates the volume of traffic that's going to be on those roads at build-out, but I'd rather come in here with numbers that would overstate the situation than understate the situation.
So, you use very conservative numbers?
That's correct.
And your, your analysis is consistent with the city's requirements?
It specifically complies with the criteria of City of Benita Springs and your staff reviewed the report and concluded the same thing, that we did follow the standard procedures for assessing impacts on adjacent road networks.
And based on transportation, that under your analysis is not a basis to deny or diminish this project?
That's correct.
Thank you.
For the record again, Mike Dellett with Grady Minor Engineers, a drainage engineer in this capacity today. And there were a couple of specific questions came up and a couple of general questions that came up regarding drainage. The general questions, I think I addressed before about water quality and attenuation, but two specific questions. One was about the drainage between the, this row of, oops, this row of homes here. It was a good question, you know, if they're only 10 or 12 feet apart or whatever that distance is, how do you drain that? And there would be a series of inlets between those homes with connecting pipes. The roof drainage would connect to that and then would be taken out to the master stormwater system, out to the dry detention. The other question was about flooding across the street from Irma. I suspect that was from the riverine flooding, which obviously is a much larger scale than this project area and was upstream contributing areas that deliver that water to the Imperial at this location. So, this project, under the Water Management District rules and the city's code, will not exacerbate any of that type of flooding and we still have to meet the attenuation requirements under the city code and work with city staff with that at the time of D O.
Thanks. Again, it's Wayne Arnold and I wanted to touch on a few things that were brought up by some of the public speakers. One is density and, you know, we've had this debate, what's the surrounding density and land use? And I think, you know, our analysis and staff's analysis says that yes, we are in an area where there are other single-family and duplex, two-family type structures. We're asking for a similar problem with those. And I just, maybe not to reinvent the history here, but to tell you a little bit of the history of how this 11.6 dwelling units per acre was established as your land use category. And I think Mr. Dolmer was actually working for the consultant that the city was using when they established their comprehensive plan. But this area generally allowed for higher densities under the Lee Plan, but when you established your City of Benita Plan, they took the minimum lot sizes that were allowed for the TFC II zoning. You divide that at 43,560 square feet, which is an acre, and guess what? That number equates to 11.6 units per acre. No magic about it, but that's how this density was established. So, I would submit to you that many of the other duplexes that have been built are actually at the 11.6 units per acre if you look at them on a tract basis. I mean, keep in mind that you've got an older platted subdivision that has public streets, there's public drainage. We're asking for a single lot that we're having common ownership, common water management facilities and common maintenance for all of those facilities. There's no public street here. But we are, as mentioned in the plan, and you can see, we're providing for internal sidewalks for those folks. The building separation, I think Ms. Gensen did a good job explaining that, the standard we're asking for of 10 feet is a deviation from your code, but it doesn't distinguish any plan development. It says, any plan development, this is your standard. We're seeking the 10-foot separation as we have for many other projects. And if you go out in the field, you'll find that whether you're in Benita Bay, Spanish Wells, there are many other planned communities where a five-foot building setback on each side of a lot equates to a 10-foot building separation for similar structures. So, what we're asking for is not something we're trying to cram in here that's not something you haven't seen elsewhere in the city. It's something that's been done fairly regularly in the city. So, I think what we're asking for does represent good planning and I wouldn't dismiss that this is infill development and yes, we have to get it right. But you have several policies in your housing element that says you need additional housing, you need a variety of housing types, and I think that we've known the history of building out east, we're not going to be opening up new land for development, which means all of these parcels are going to be sought after for maximizing their density. Land costs are high, development costs are high, and the way to recoup your investment is to go ahead and try to maximize your density. And as I mentioned before, we think we've internalized our development envelope here because we provided buffers to our adjacent properties to the north and east that aren't under our control, but we provided that. We provided the setback for those perimeters per your code. We provided parking per your code. And what I didn't really highlight, and it came up a couple of times, where do these kids play or where do they put a swimming pool? Well, these aren't individual lots, so there won't be individual swimming pools, but we do have an amenity tract that is shown on the plan and it's in this area. And I've depicted a small amenity building because we may wish to build a small amenity building. We've depicted tot lot and trails, but that area is a common ownership that, that would be a place for folks to, to, to be and enjoy and recreate. And then you also have the area where each of these units will have its own patio. They may not have a lot of yard space, but I don't know, last time you all have been many of these condo projects or a townhome project, you just don't have a lot of space outside your perimeter. You rely on the common open space. So, not unusual what we're asking for. And then the lastly, I'll point out, I don't, I heard several people mention that we're just going to have a parking problem. Well, the difference between what we're proposing, we're meeting code, we meet your code requirement. The Mosaic project had a parking deviation. I don't know what their, I don't know exactly what their parking situation is in terms of how problematic that may be at night or on a weekend. I'm not there. But I would say here that we're providing 13 extra parking spaces in the site above code in terms of the two per unit. So, that is sort of the overflow. We have also internal spaces along our streets where we could put other parallel parking spaces in if we needed to, but we're not going to create a parking problem on the public right-of-way, which is Dean Street and Matheson. So, whatever problem we create, it's our own problem. It doesn't become an issue for the neighborhood. And I think that's important to distinguish, that we are looking to do this. It's not a gated community. It's a project that's going to be, the other gentleman mentioned the Matheson connection, and I think that's important because you, you look for connectivity in the city and you want us to connect to these streets. I mean, if I plotted this as individual lots and they all had an access point onto Dean Street, how many access points am I going to have backing out onto Dean Street? I mean, that is not good planning. What is good planning is to internalize all of that circulation and allow the controlled access points to your public streets. So, with that, again, you've heard staff, we meet your code, they've recommended approval. We've met the criteria for plan development rezoning and I know that the residents have expressed interest, but I've been doing this a long time. I can't tell you the last neighborhood meeting I attended or public hearing I attended where people are just rah-rah-ing, "We want a new project next to us." It doesn't happen. I think you all have been around long enough to know that. There's a public opinion, there's also a code. We try to do the best we can to make all this work together and we hope you can agree with us. Thank you.
Thank you, Wayne. Anything else on this particular project on the board or staff or anybody at this point? Seeing nothing, I...
You said from the board? You talking about us?
The board, go right ahead.
My notes bounce all over the place, but I live very near there. I know all the problems on Dean Street with the traffic. Mr. Banks, I appreciate your sitting and studying, but you said you completed your study this last couple of days at 4:00, 4:30. It's a dramatically different street from 5:00 to 6:00 p.m. And Ms. Lawyer, ma'am, I do consider myself an expert in avoiding traffic, especially when I'm caught in it on Main Street and Benita Springs Road, which then spills onto Dean Street and Terry Street. It's an impossible area to navigate well when everybody gets out of work at 5:00 p.m. Derek, I think I heard you say, and maybe Mary you as well, that the city has a policy that we want to be moving everybody west towards the water. We're promoting, we're promoting growing to the west side, west side of the city.
No, I didn't say west side of the city. Infill, it's in, it's in the staff report. The limitations on density growth in the city are, are...
Anyway...
In the west...
The city has this attitude, we want to be filling into the west.
No.
What was it somebody said?
There, there is a provision in the comp plan preventing density increases in the barrier islands and there are provisions limiting density in the east. The infill is the core in the downtown.
Prohibiting density increases to the east?
To the west.
To the west?
On barrier islands.
Okay. The more units we put into these flood zones, flood areas, areas prone to flooding, which are, we all know are increasing, we're having more flooding going on and it's into more areas of our city than ever before, that costs us all. Our insurance, insurance companies are having a very difficult time even insuring us now. I've lived here for eight years and my property insurance rate has doubled. My, the cost of my homeowner's insurance has doubled and this is because of all, to me, it's all the extra costs these insurance companies and the city is absorbing as a result of more housing being built in the flood areas. It costs every single one of us. So, to my thinking, the city is a little wrong-headed here and Rick, I hope the next council and your successor will have an opportunity to address that. We, when the code was written, however many years ago, however many decades ago, a lot of thought went into it and a lot of much smarter heads than mine went into it and they came up with these arrangements of how many houses we can put on a spot and how much distance should be separating houses. And one of the things they came up with was there needs to be 20-foot separation between houses. There's also a limit of 11.6 units per acre. And here we are talking about not, not the 11.6, we're still going to meet that, but we are cramming more houses into less space and we just need to catch up with our infrastructure before we start cramming more and more and more buildings into a given acre. When I mean infrastructure, I mean the streets. Dean should be a big wider street. Stormwater issues, as those on the board know, I'm always talking about stormwater issues. Dean Street has no real good way to deal with stormwater. When it rains hard, for, as it did the, the weekend before Irma, the street has reached its capacity of what it's able to contain and there is no address for that to get to the river. The infrastructure needs to catch up. Another comment, another thought I have, and I've, I've been on this board for four years now, and there are certain projects we need to be looking at twice. We shouldn't be coming up with a decision on this pro, this project today. The, the city council looks at every project twice, correct, Rick? Yes. And the city council relies heavily upon what this zoning board recommends. This is one example where we should, and I don't know the criteria to say, I haven't come up with it yet, some projects we need to look at twice, some projects we need, it's okay to look at once. This is one of those, we need to look at it twice. I need to sleep on it. I need to think about it some more. The presentation by the developer is very good, I need to absorb all of that. Presentations by the members of the community, I need to absorb all that. And I can't do it in an hour and a half.
Is there anything else, Eppen, Ward members say?
Just, just, one, one more little thing. It seems like a small point, but the, the parking... It seems like a small point, but the parking bothers me here. Two parking places per a three-bedroom unit in this particular community, and I live in that particular community, it's really not enough. And you all are also, it's a good design, Wayne. You want to keep the garbage cans in the garage, okay? What happens when I got to get that garbage can out of the garage and out onto the street? Two cars have got to move. It's just cramming too much into too little of space. That's all, Mr. Vice Chairman. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anything else? Okay, now, before entertaining a motion, and I'm going to just say something perhaps, and if I'm out of order, but I'm sure the attorney will say so. There's always a... And everybody who made comments here, each and every one, I know I personally listen to every word. And you're moved by some of these comments, quite a bit, as a matter of fact. But this is not unique to this particular project or any other that I've been involved with over these last few years. And the one motivation I have, and the only one that I have that leads me to make a decision on any particular issue is what does the code state? And that is the tough one for anybody to kind of absorb, especially a neighbor. I live in a community right now where there's huge a project going on, infill housing. I see it, I taste it, I smell it every day, and I will for another couple of years. But that's not the issue for deciding whether or not a project, in my opinion, should be seriously considered. So that little preamble, I'll entertain a motion on this particular project. Is there a motion to approve this project?
I move that we deny the request to rezone 4.6 acres from two-family conservation to residential plan development to allow 48 residential dwelling units at 11035 Dean Street, case number PD 23-103517-BOS.
Is there a second to this motion?
Second.
Is the discussion on the motion? Now, if you're going to vote yes, that means you're voting to deny. That's why you don't like negative motions. So if you're voting... Let me get this right. You vote yes, you're voting to deny. If you vote no, you're voting to approve. Everybody have that? Okay? Clerk would read the... Would call the roll, please.
Board member Waterhouse.
Yay.
No, yay means you're agreeing to deny, okay?
Board member Benson.
Yes.
Vice Chairman Hirschenson.
Nay.
Board member Galloway.
Yes.
Board member Gambrell.
Yes.
The motion carries four to one.
The application has been denied.
No, the application proceeds to...
Proceed, I'm sorry.
The council with the recommendation.
Proceed, correct. Yes, okay. That ends this particular case, and we'll let the room clear out, and then we'll entertain the next one.
That was good, Ben. Thank you. Good clarification.
You're welcome.
I know, I'm...
We have to... We may have to speed things along here.
Okay. We have gone now for two hours, two and a half hours. So please, for the next presentation, we'd like to get this over with, if that's possible. People have other commitments. And I need to get breakfast.
I think you do have to leave. I think we still have a quorum, but one person has to leave.
Four out of seven, yes?
Yes.
Still have a quorum.
And in fact, I read somewhere, we started with a...
Okay, you have to leave, okay. So we're now to a quorum. One, two, three, oh, boy. Well, we still have a quorum, but we're legal.
I'll make myself wider this way, instead of this way.
I'm ready as soon as you are. Okay, so...
And the next project is the Dorset Harbor Project Plan Development, Mary, do you have an introduction, or you want to just go right along with the applicant? Okay? Okay, go ahead, sir.
Thank you. For the record, my name is Dan DeLeese. I'm a land use planner representing the applicant for this case. With me today, I have, I'll just say, the J.R. Evans Engineering Team. They're here to do some of the presentation and here for questions. Marielle with Terrell Hall and Associates, our environmental consultant. Neil Montgomery's our attorney. She'll be here if there are any of those questions. Then myself will go through most of the presentation and then hand it over to J.R. Evans Engineering. This is a pretty straightforward case. It's 10 units right here on the west side of Royal, just north of Benita Beach Road. On the east side, to the east of 41. No direct connection to 41. You see between us and 41 is the Lee County Boat Ramp. We're at the intersection of where Pennsylvania comes into a Royal and about a half mile north of Benita Beach Road. You can see to the south of us, there's that, an F-dot stormwater pond. We're in the moderate-density residential future land use category that allows for up to six units an acre if you're doing a planned development. You could see the moderate-density residential land use category in the area. It's pretty much all around us, except for right across the street. There is medium-density land use category, which encourages slightly higher-density types of units. And as you heard from the last case, right across the street from us are villa units, which we're not proposing. We're just doing single-family. So up to six units an acre is the allowance. Our density is well below that. This, like the first case, was a... There's an existing planned development on it. The master concept plan has been vacated due to inactivity. That plan had 20 units on six acres. This, I'll go through that plan. There's very little open space on it. You could see just units. There's a detention area. Again, 20 units on the six acres. The proposed plan, essentially, the big difference is there's just a lot more open space. We have a lot more dry detention. We also have preserve areas. Part of the reason why the last plan didn't have very much open space is they came in below a threshold where the open space requirement wasn't the open space requirement. Because of all the preserve we have on-site and because of the lower density, we're able to come in, provide that open space, and provide more preserve area. So our density, again, the moderate-density future land use category allows for up to six units an acre. We're proposing 1.7 units an acre. The surrounding neighborhood is all at two units an acre, except for right across the street where you have those villas, which is a significantly higher density. Again, that's not us. We're only 10 units on the six acres, 1.7 units an acre. The access aligns with Pennsylvania. Transportation, like the first case where it was only six units, we're 10 units, it's still a de minimis traffic impact. We didn't ask for a waiver. I suppose we could have, didn't even think about it. But we didn't ask for one. We provided transportation study. Transportation planner Ted Tresh asked to not come because it was just so little. Stormwater plan, I'll hand it over to Chris. Chris will talk to you about the stormwater plan and the deviations. And then Neil will come up and talk about some tweaks to some, just a couple of conditions.
Neil?
Yes.
Yes, go ahead.
Good morning. My name's Chris Mitchell. I am a professional engineer and have been in that area for 27-plus years and registered for 23 as a professional engineer. This is the high level. You've been through two presentations. You understand that this is conceptual on what we're doing. You see some blue arrows here. It's taking the surrounding flow and routing it down through the preserve area and out in this area of the property, which then goes to the Imperial River. We are required to develop our design based on the city of Benita Springs requirements, as well as South Florida Water Management District. And at the time of DO, we'll meet those regulations. On-site is indicated by yellow arrows. We'll collect on-site through swales and RCP reinforced concrete pipe and drainage inlets and go to the dry detention area. It's retention below a certain volume, which means that it stays there and goes into the ground. And once it rises to a certain level, it's controlled discharge to the Imperial River. Deviations, we have a necessity to have some deviations based on the site geometry. You're going to hear that a lot, site geometry and the lot size. So we decrease the density, increase the lot size. And we have a very odd-shaped parcel. So deviation one allows us to have dry utilities within the right-of-way. It's depicted that we can have them outside the right-of-way as well. But if we have a physical constraint with the acceptance from the dry utility companies, they can put it in the right-of-way. Allows us to have a 40-foot right-of-way for these 10 homes. Deviation two, in your code, you're required to have more than two or more than one point of access if you're greater than five acres. We're 5.9 acres. Again, our site geometry and where we line up on Pennsylvania and A-Royal really kind of create a difficult situation for site access. It's not quite a T, as you know. Pennsylvania is a sweeping turn from A-Royal to Pennsylvania. There will be some redesign for that. Oops, sorry. So our main access is here. We're asking for a deviation where this is an emergency access only. So emergency vehicles have secondary access to and from, but the homes will only leave here. And that's based on, we don't have enough distance, really, to have a full access that you want to put traffic through. So that's why.
There's a gate there? Barrier?
For the emergency?
Yes.
Yeah, yeah. It's access-controlled by emergency vehicle only, yes. Deviation three, it's kind of an odd one. But basically, you have to have right angles for your side lot lines, and we're asking for a deviation. We've got a couple instances where we're accommodating some preserve area. And then Lot 6 is adjacent to preserve, which is an odd shape. It's kind of an island by itself, so that allows us to not utilize right angles and still get a lot that... It's just, the geometry of the parcel is really difficult. And deviation four, really, it's a setback deviation, but it allows us to have a long access easement instead of a road to go to Lot 6. And it has to do with setback to a right-of-way versus an access easement. And so the deviation allows us to have that access easement and still utilize Lot 6.
Is that paved?
Oh, yeah, it's paved.
Will be paved?
Yes. It will be paved, and there is a little bit of an oddity in that we provide access to an existing home in here. That's another reason why we have an access easement. So there's an existing property owner about that location that is not selling. There's an existing easement to that property from A-Royal, and we're routing him through our property, and he has access off of that access easement. And those are the deviations. So I'll let Neil speak to hers.
Good morning, good afternoon. I'm just looking for clarification, so if I can get you to turn with me to 7A.
That's page number?
Oh, well, it says 8 on mine, but... And so what it says is, "At the time of local DO, we're going to coordinate with various departments for work in the right-of-way." And that makes a lot of sense. What I'm just trying to make sure is, we're going to coordinate and follow existing rules. We're not going to coordinate and create rules that aren't written down somewhere. So I'm assuming that's what it means, but I just want to make sure. And then, on the next page, 9, condition 8. And again, this is, I just want to understand. It says, "At the time of local DO and building permit, the applicant is going to demonstrate compliance with all local, state, and federal regs for construction within floodways and floodplains." My concern about that is, is that there's a statute that says we can't, at the local level, at the O-stage, require a state or federal permit. So I'm not sure what that evidence looks like. Certainly, before you can do any construction, you're going to have to comply with South Florida state and federal regulations. It's just kind of a timing thing because the reason they created that statute is because people would get timed out of their local review while undergoing their state and federal review, and they were trying to prevent that from happening. So I'm just trying to make sure that that doesn't happen here. So those are my concerns.
And if you have any other questions for the applicant's team, we're here. Otherwise, Mary is going to present. Thank you.
Again, Mary says, "No community development." I don't think I need to go through my presentation unless you'd like me to. But to clarify for those conditions, no, we wouldn't be holding them up. We typically make them stipulations at the development order time just to make sure you have the required permits. It's just putting you on notice.
Okay.
Would you like me to go through my presentation? Or do you have any questions for me at this time?
We can get to the questions of the board, sure. Speed up a little bit.
I got nothing for you. If this gentleman would come back in the middle there, yes, sir. Easy one. You back up a slide or two where you... Mary, you may have to help him. No, he knows how to do it. To the blue and yellow arrows, there you go. So Pennsylvania, full disclosure to the board, I live right there. The intersection of Pennsylvania and A-Royal, I use several times a day. So you guys are paying for reworking that intersection to turn it from a big turn into a T.
So I've been involved with the northern parcel, north of this, many, several, several years ago. And I've been involved with this. The discussion has always been that there will be conditions requiring improvements to Pennsylvania. We are not there for the development order. So, but I am anticipating that we will have conditions requiring improvements through our right-of-way permit, yes.
So Mary, you may need to come back.
I'm going to repeat the same thing.
Okay. Okay. So the blue arrows are existing stormwater flow.
So...
So how... In other words, my next question would be, how do you make sure that stormwater flow isn't coming into your 10 properties? Your development?
Post-development?
Yeah. When everything's done, how do you keep?
So we have to design to the 25-year elevation for our berm. And so that's a South Florida requirement. I'm sure it's adopted in the city of Benita's code. So we have to do a berm around the property so that we don't have uncontrolled discharge. And that will also prevent that from coming in. Now, if we have water that flows around or comes into our site in existing conditions, we have to account for that in the same manner. That's a rule of South Florida. So that's why you see the blue arrows, where we account for the drainage. It may be routed slightly different, but it won't affect the existing development. And we account for the flow that is abutting in our site or going through our site, and we route it to where the ultimate discharge is, which is Imperial River.
So you said the 25-year rule. You mean the prepare-for-the-25-year-storm rule?
So, yeah, Lee County's a little bit different. Lee County, the required minimum... Lee County, the required minimum roadway is 5.5.
Uh-huh.
Oh, sorry. Or the 10-year storm event. I usually designed to the 25-year storm event. So the bulk of my career has been in Collier County, which their requirement is a drive aisle is a 25-year elevation. So you use a 25-year storm event. You rain on that, and that's what you, you account for. And so that determines your elevation of your perimeter berm. And the 25-year elevation is the perimeter berm, regardless of the jurisdiction you're in, based on South Florida?
And every 25 years is happening every five years now. Thank you.
Yeah.
Mary, I have a question on the deviation request number one. And that has to do with the utilities. Is there any update regarding the issue with Benita Springs Utilities, regarding that deviation request?
Based on what was submitted, Benita Springs Utilities had concerns and therefore they objected to it. But we've spoken that they're going to coordinate with them, and we'll see if they can come to an agreement.
Thank you.
So I have initial questions on the stormwater plan. This is where the stormwater will go once the development is completed, correct? What we're seeing here?
Yes.
I'm assuming currently it just kind of flows in a sheet flow across this property?
Uh, it doesn't necessarily. And I'm not doing the design on. I'm just doing the zoning. So I can have John and Elizabeth come up and speak. And if they can speak to it, they haven't been sworn in. They weren't here. So they'd need to be sworn in. But, but it's probably a combination of going down into the low area.
Right.
This area.
Yes.
And probably some that comes onto the site. Yes, sir.
I guess, my question is really, if, once it's redirected, we mentioned there's a property owner here that doesn't want to sell, that's located kind of right next to the entrance, I guess. Is all this extra water going to affect that property?
No, we can't, we can't do that.
Oh, I know you can't, but how are you going to manage that?
Well, it's going to come down to the south. The plan is it comes down to the south. And then via a pipe, it comes over. And then this is an, it's really tough to see because it's.
Ditch, isn't it?
Vegeta, it's a ditch. And it goes into the ditch.
All right. And so that pipe will be sized for a 25-year storm?
Uh, it's based on what flow goes into it. It's not necessarily a 25-year storm. It's the runoff created.
By a 25-year storm.
Uh, I haven't, I didn't do the design. I'm not sure if it's the 25 years. So pipe hydraulics, generally, you don't do it to a, unless it's an interconnect between lakes, you don't do the 25-year. The hydraulics get very, very large. And I don't know what the city requirement is. But this is John Bonney, and he did the preliminary design.
I'm just.
Just want to tell the truth, the whole truth, not the full truth? All right, there we go.
Yeah, so we're, John Bonney, J.R. Evans. We are currently in design, so we don't have all the answers on that yet. But we would be looking at traditionally a 10-year.
10-year.
10-year storm for the sizing of Culvers.
Okay.
John, get your qualifications, please.
Oh. J.R. Evans Engineering, civil engineer, 22 years in Southwest Florida and throughout the United States.
Thank you.
All right. Is there, at this point, any public comment? Please state your name.
I'm Carleen Young, owner of 27261 Arroyo, which is down at the end of the street. I'd just like to say I'm very happy to see a project of this caliper come to the neighborhood versus the many other options that could be presented based on the density allowed for this property. I am aware of all of our flood issues there. Of course, this last storm, we had 30 inches of water. So I know that they will be building, as I need to build on my property, a minimum of probably six foot above the current ground level. So I don't think we'll have any issues with flood damage to the homes. And the only other comment I would say is when they do get to the redevelopment of the Pennsylvania-area road in Arroyo. Since Mr. Gambrell does live in the area, I'm certain that he knows that it can be challenging to make that turn if you live on Arroyo. So it would be nice to see that improved. Because for me, it's a little bit of a safety issue, pencil, to pull down to Arroyo with the curve of Pennsylvania. But look forward to having a beautiful project. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else have a comment?
Which storm did you flood in?
I did not personally, but Ian, I know they had six to seven foot of water in all the lower.
So Ian, not Helene or Milton?
Well, Milton, the water did come up over the dock. But it was, my neighbor next door, I believe, had 27 inches of water in his house that is at ground level.
Thanks.
This Imperial River, who was that? Who's responsible for keeping it clean? Does anybody know? That's going to be your drainage, that's your drainage for that project.
Let's put it off on the state. That was sarcastic. Sorry.
No, that's outside the project, but we need to know who's going to maintain that. This is going to be a condominium? Or a homeowner association, they're going to take care of their own road? I believe that's true.
It's part of the property, isn't it?
I know. I've been told this was a Ringling Brothers property at one time. And I'd like to emphasize that for the city of Benita Springs, that the circus used to live here. And I'm trying to get people that have been here a long time to come up with some information about this property. I'm really in favor of it. It's a, it's a good place to be. Now, in the future, we're going to run a road across to I-70, over to 41. It's going to take us into the, around the back of the shopping center. So the traffic on this turn is going to have to be re-looked at. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone have a comment? Okay, I think we're ready now for a motion on this project. I'd like to make the motion that the zoning board approve, case number PD 23-106253-BOS. Is your second to that motion?
I'll second.
Second, all right. Any discussion? Clerk could read the roll, please.
Board Member Benson.
Yes.
Vice Chairman Herschinson.
Yes.
Board Member Galloway.
Yes.
Board Member Gambrell.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Motion carries. Thank you all.
Thank you.
The next item of business, I guess, is approving the minutes from the September 17th zoning board meeting.
Make a motion.
Motion, please.
So moved.
So moved. Anybody opposed? Okay. That motion carries. Anybody here want to make public comment on anything at all?
I would. Just, you know my idea about us looking at stuff twice?
Yeah.
Anybody else think that's a good idea? Is there a way I should make an official motion? And I would wait until we're all present.
I think it's a, it's a matter of time, cost, you know, to the applicants and so forth. For me personally, I don't see the value in that. I guess, you know, if we have these packets, you know, early enough, that's just my, my position. I can't speak for the others. So that's just my immediate response, that I think that's what our job is, is to look at the material, ask what all the questions we can without any restrictions, and then render a decision.
That's my problem, Ben. I spend hours looking at the packets coming in. And read all the stuff that's also online. But my best questions, I come up with after hearing evidence, and I sleep on it.
Yeah, I understand. But then again.
I'm not that quick on my feet.
There is a two-phase project here, step, I should say. And that is, of course, this goes, we'll go to the city council, at which time there could be more in the way of perhaps comments like you are making right now.
But we know they rubber stamp what we do. Maybe the next council will be different.
The new council takes effect tomorrow. Yes.
Especially contentious ones or big ones, we can continue them?
This one, the middle one today, the second one, was pretty complex and introduces some, some pretty unique ideas. Condominium ownership on very dense, bright, dense, small. Yeah, that's a complicated question. We can always continue this hearing, right?
So let me, let me, oh, wait on.
That twin villa thing.
Here's.
Attorney Rooney, please.
Here's, here's the issue. The, the, let's say that someone came in with a real big project, like the projects we had out east a couple of months back. They would go to the planning board for a comp plan amendment. They would come to the zoning board for the PD, usually associated with those types of projects. And they'd have two hearings in front of the city council. All of that, from the moment it gets submitted and found sufficient, has to be done within 180 days under Florida law. So you, there is no room for another meeting unless you want to shortchange other, other parts of the review. From the perspective of continuance, if something is not found sufficient, generally, there's those extent, those timelines get extended or the applicant can waive them if there's things that they want to work, continue to work on. But every couple of years, as the processes get slowed down, as either, either local governments are busy or, or projects get delayed because of the complexity of, the legislature comes in, swoops in and says, "You got to do it faster." You got to, now we get to the point where they're practically issuing, you have to issue building permits before you can review. So the, the reality is, is there's no time to make changes.
And 180 days is state law, you said?
State law. It's in chapter 166.
And how long is it before city council? 60 days? A third of that?
Well, it at least takes 60 days. But you also have to remember that there's, there's the review, there's 30 days to review something when it comes in and found sufficient. Then there's all the modifications that come in, the various REIs and things that that happen over time. Then there is scheduling it for, for you guys, scheduling it for the city council. And that depends often when things come in. You know, if they come in during the wrong window, the application window for Mike to get the advertising out, to get the meeting scheduled. So there's a, there's a huge swing. And that's probably one month alone, is just trying to make sure things get lined up appropriately. Otherwise, you know, you guys aren't, you guys aren't working on call. We try to have a schedule that we, we keep to, and so we hope that the applicant.
But that's a possibility.
No, it is not. So it used to be that, it used to be that most local governments had a timeframe where they said, "Submittals, you have to get it in by this day, and that'll keep you in line for a meeting so many days out." The problem is that it's 180 days from when they submit.
So we got to give the public, we got to give the public 30 days notice that we're continuing on a particular project?
No, no, I'm just, and you can have continuances. The applicant can draw, have their own continuances. And you can have continuance, but continuances as well. But there has to be stated criteria for what you're missing that you require. It's not just, there's a big crowd of people or there's questions I don't understand. You have to state them out specifically so that the continuance has the opportunity to move forward.
And that doesn't fall under the 180 days?
No, that falls within 180. Once the application's sufficient, everything's on the clock.
Thank you, state.
So did you say the planning board reviews these before we do?
No, if, if it's a land use amendment plus a rezoning. So for instance, this one, you, all the things you've been dealing with today have been rezonings. And, you know, as we had the question on the Dean project, well, maybe the density isn't appropriate. Well, you know, that is the situation between the comp plan and, and the zoning. So if someone was to change the project or try to increase it, truly increase the density, they would be changing the comp plan too, which is a separate hearing from zoning board.
And that would be plant, the planning board?
That would be the planning.
I don't think I've seen one come through.
Because we don't, because this city is, is, is pretty much built out and grown. And, you know, our plans have been amended over the times, and there, there's just not a lot of that going on. We're doing, we're in the finishing out the city. We're in the infill stage. We're not in the, you know, green fields.
Anymore.
Okay. As an aside, I want to thank the chairman for taking this day off to allow me to, three hours here today. If there's no objection, I am, the meeting is adjourned.